At seven oh one, I will call the meeting of November third, twenty twenty five to order and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I agree. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then ask for a moment of silence. Alright, and then I will ask our Vice Chair for any announcements if there happen to be any.
There there are a few.
Oh, there are.
Let me get to that page. Uh, the meeting is being recorded by the recording clerk for the purpose of taking minutes. Is there anyone else present who wishes to record the meeting? Seeing none. To attendees of the meeting, a sign in sheet is being circulated. The board asks you please sign in to indicate your attendance at today's meeting. It's over on the table. Uh, the select board meetings can be viewed by going into the cable videos icon on the homepage of the town's website. And on Monday, November seventeenth, the board will hold a meeting at seven P M. The next select board work session will be on Monday, November tenth at six P M. Please check the meeting postings on the town website for information to either join via Zoom or for the location of that particular meeting work session.
Thank you very much. Uh, and here we'll open it up if there are any questions or comments from the citizens in the audience not related to a topic on the agenda. Don't everyone jump in once. Okay, then we will keep going. Uh, and we will turn first to new business, the Council on Aging, appointment of Michael DiMario.
Uh, make a motion, uh, vote to appoint Michael DiMario to the Council on Aging for a two year term ended June thirtieth twenty seven, two thousand twenty seven.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
We had a chat the last meeting, it's not that we don't care to find things out, we've already had a review of this.
Exactly. Exactly, so no other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It passes. Next up, we'll turn it over to our annual tax classification. Uh, I don't know if we go to Kevin or to Tula first. Um, I imagine it's very similar to last year, some of the numbers have changed.
Yep.
You'll give us the highlights.
Yes.
Alright. Have Kevin or?
Yeah, so um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, the board, um, it's our annual meeting. We do it every year. We talk about classification, um, and tonight we have Tula, our assessor here to walk us through, um, what this year looks like and allow the board eventually, end of the meeting, to take a vote, uh, relative to the classification status of residential and commercial and how they relate. Um, so with that, I just want to thank Tula for the work she put into the presentation, the work she does every day and for being here tonight. Thank you, Tula.
Sure, thank you, thank you. Um, so, uh, as Kevin mentioned, this is an annual, um, classification here and that must be, it's required actually in order for us to set a tax rate. Um, and the reason why we're here is actually, um, to, um, what do I want to say here? It is to set the classification, um, the tax rate for all the classes. Um, and this is in accordance to Mass General Law Chapter sixty, section fifty six. Now, I do want to mention that the tax rate that I'm using in this presentation is only estimated because we won't have a tax rate until the recap has been submitted to the Department of Revenue and they have approved it. Um, anything could change and it has. So the tax rate that's being used here is, um, the best that we think it might be. Um, but again, it is subject to change, I just want to make that perfectly clear.
But you wouldn't expect wild swings, right? It's gonna be on the margins?
No, no, but it has happened.
And this is the tax rate for fiscal year two thousand twenty five, twenty six?
Fiscal year twenty six. The bills that will go out in January.
So we we basically do the catch up on the entire fiscal year's tax rate in the last two bills?
Correct.
Of the year, which is January and April?
Yep.
February and May, okay, thank you.
So the first two bills that we send out are estimated. I'm sorry, I'm having some trouble with this because it's not actually the presentation that's on here. This is, um, our expert isn't here today, so, um, we're doing the best we can with this.
I've got a, um, a PDF of it saved separately, you want me to email it to you?
No, no, I have that, but I can't, I I can't cast it to here, I have to use this. Um, so, so the action that's required tonight and the whole entire reason for the classification here is with the select board to vote, um, to establish a tax rate, um, a selection of a residential factor, which is, um, uh, one would be, well, I'm gonna explain that later, but one would be a tax rate for all the classes, whether to grant an open space discount, whether to adopt a residential exemption, whether to adopt a small commercial exemption, and this is something that we do every year in order to set the tax rate. So the minimum residential factor, um, is the percentage of the tax levy to be paid by each class of real property and personal property for the fiscal year. And in order to do so, a residential factor is chosen. The residential factor governs the percentage of the tax levy to be borne by the residential and open space, which is kind of one, and the difference is shifted to commercial, industrial and personal property. The adopted residential factor cannot be less than the minimum residential factor, which is determined by the Department of Revenue for each community because of course it depends on the size of the community. So for fiscal year twenty six, the minimum residential factor is ninety six point four two oh eight percent.
Go, go.
So in other words, we could give, if we wanted to, we could give a four point, or a three point four percent discount.
That's split. So adopting a residential factor of one results in the taxation of all the property at the same rate. Adopting a residential factor less than one percent to as low as the minimum, uh, residential factor results in a residential class bearing a proportionately lower share of the total levy by shifting a larger portion to the commercial, industrial and personal property classes. This is often referred to as a split rate, one for residential and open space and the other for commercial, industrial and personal property or C I P, so just easier. So a split rate does not raise more revenue, it simply shifts the tax burden among the taxpayers. Should the select board vote to adopt a residential factor of one, then the estimated tax rate for fiscal year twenty twenty six would be fifteen dollars and sixty six cents for all the classes. Again, this is estimated. So how do we arrive there? Well, if you take the levy divided by the total value, it comes to our tax rate at fifteen sixty six. The levy is, um, so the value is approved by the state. If the levy changes, the tax rate will change. The tax for the average single family home would be fourteen thousand four hundred eighty three dollars and eighteen cents. That's for the average single family home, not necessarily residential property. The tax for the average C I P, commercial, industrial, personal property would be six thousand nine hundred ninety three dollars and eighty cents. Now that, that amount includes personal property, which we have a hundred and thirty six personal property and they're not huge, that's why you see that this rate, this, this amount is what it is. Historically, the select board has voted residential factor of one. The maximum shift to the C I P classes for Topsfield is fifty percent. Selecting the maximum shift, de- this decre- decreases the residential tax rate to fifteen dollars and eleven cents and it increases C I P to twenty three dollars and forty nine cents. This results in a reduction of ninety eight dollars and some cents or four percent for the average residential parcel, which includes everything. Residential is condos, apartments, uh, vacant land. Um, and then it shifts it and increases, um, the C I P by three thousand four hundred ninety six dollars and ninety cents for the average.
So as I was looking at this, I really didn't understand how the fifty percent fits in.
So that'll be the next slide.
Okay.
This is just letting you know what the figures are. Is it worth reducing the average tax bill by five hundred dollars and increase in thirty five hundred on the commercial aspect of it?
The fifty percent's the max, so theoretically you could do twenty five percent technically.
You can do it, right.
Yeah, but it's possible.
So on this slide here, Bob, you can see, um, I'm giving an example. So at the top, at the top line right here, I'm telling you that at fifteen dollars and sixty six cents, if, if everything, of all the classes, if we picked a residential factor of one, then the average, uh, residential parcel, the tax bill would be fourteen thousand one hundred ninety six dollars. And the commercial would be, and when I say commercial, I do mean C I P, commercial, industrial, personal property. Um, it would be six thousand nine hundred ninety three dollars and eighty cents. So if you look down a ten percent shift, you can see the various, um, the various amounts that it would decrease on the residential and increase on the personal property. So if you look at the last line, if we did the fifty percent, the maximum, is it worth lowering, um, splitting the rate and pushing it over at thirty five hundred on the average for, uh, commercial and industrial and personal property? Cause we don't have a lot of commercial and industrial. Here you can see ninety three point forty five percent is residential. The commercial is three point ninety seven percent. Industrial is one point two three and personal property is one point thirty five. If we had a bigger commercial, industrial, personal property or, um, personal property, uh, uh, percentage, then, you know, maybe half or or something like a city, um, then it would make sense to split the rate. Unfortunately, in Topsfield, where we have a hundred and twenty three, uh, commercial parcels, oh no, is that, yeah, the number of parcels for commercial, a hundred and twenty three. That's all, that's all we have, that's where you would be putting the burden of the taxation. Fifty eight industrial and a hundred and thirty six personal property.
So what type of assets would be personal property?
Personal property are any type of asset you use for your business. So if you have a restaurant, your, your stainless steel sink, the dishwasher, the tables, everything. That's personal property. So we don't have a lot of large businesses here, um. If we did, you can split the rate, cause you'd have good, good income to come in. But we don't, um, and we kind of would be.
Okay, so personal property is equipment, usually equipment used in businesses.
Yep, anything used in a business.
Okay, thanks.
So in the next slide, I simply, um, show you the parcel count for the different classes and the uses. Um, commercial properties are eighty nine. So on the previous, um, previous slide here, um, one twenty three, that, that includes chapter land because that's considered commercial. But if you split it out to the actual commercial properties, we have eighty nine in town.
Fifty eight industrials.
Yeah.
Still not, not a lot.
So in the next slide, I'm just, um, this is Essex County. I'm trying to make it even on here. It's not working nicely, here it is. This is, um, the towns in Essex County, the cities and towns. And, um, I kind of highlighted where we are, Topsfield, Middleton and Boxford. We, we use, um, a residential factor of one. We, not, none of the three towns really have a big, uh, commercial, um, um, percentage of parcels. If you do look at where they have shifted, they're mostly cities or big towns um, to make a big difference.
Yeah, we're not the, we're not the least though.
No, we're not, but you know what? If, if you look at, um, most of the, the towns that do split their rate, their C I P values are over five hundred thousand or six hundred or a million five. That's where they're getting, they're seeing the most benef- benefit to help the residential. So in this next slide, um, this is our values. I'm comparing last fiscal year twenty twenty five with this year twenty twenty six and the total residential, that's the first class, total residential. We have, we see an increase of the values at five point two percent.
Yeah, this is interesting, cause as I look at this and the average home assessed value is nine hundred and six thousand, but the average commercial is six hundred and ninety eight thousand, so that, the commercial is assessments, average commercial assessment is quite a bit less than the average household assessment.
I'm sorry, which, which, um, which slide are you looking at? So I can get to.
I did some advanced math, I divided the dollar column by the parcel count column.
Well, I'm just trying to see where you are so I can, um.
I'm looking at column two thousand twenty six.
Yep.
And, uh, total class one residential.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the average, if there's two million twenty and twenty two hundred parcels, the average value is nine hundred and six thousand. And the commercial is like thirty five percent less, six hundred and ninety eight thousand.
Yep.
And the industrial is in the neighborhood of half. So it's into you, I, I was kind of anticipating the commercial industrial would have high, higher valuations, but they don't.
We don't have it. We have a lot of small, small office condos and what is the top thing that comes to mind? We lost Petco, Ebsco left, um, we've got Alex's, we've got the Topsfield House Pizza, like.
But the Petco building is still on the books, is a tax.
The buildings are on the book.
Yeah.
Yes.
And is, um, the Topsfield, um, s- uh, mall down there by with, uh, Dawson's and so forth, owned by Mr. Flop, is that one?
Shop is.
Con is one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So overall, for all the values, real estate and personal property, the real estate parcels, which would include commercial and real estate, I mean, and personal property, we see an increase of five point one percent. And this is just a graph, it's showing how the average, now this is showing the average single family, not necessarily the residential. How the, how it's increased over the last ten years.
Really accelerated, started in twenty two, twenty, yeah, two thousand twenty two.
So open space, um, discount, that's the next thing, um, that we need to discuss and, um, well, the next thing on the slide. So open space is defined as land which is not otherwise classified and which is not taxable under provisions of chapter sixty one, sixty one A or sixty one B or taxable under a permanent conservation restriction and which land is not held for the production of income but is maintained in an open or natural condition and which contributes significantly to the benefit and enjoyment of the public. An exemption of up to twenty five percent could be adopted for property classified as class two open space. However, the Board of Assessors have determined that Topsfield does not have an open space classification.
But those open space lands have a natural, naturally lower valuation, right? Cause there's no building on them.
There's no building and, uh, they would probably be in chapter or conservation. So the residential exemption, um, reduces a taxable valuation of all residential properties that are a taxpayer's principal residential and shifts to its non-owner occupied residential properties. We don't really have second homes here in Topsfield. The tax levy paid by the residential class remains the same, but because of the exempted residential valuation, the levy is distributed over less assessed value result, resulting in a higher residential tax rate. The higher rate creates a shift within the residential class that reduces the taxes paid by homeowners with moderately valued properties. Those taxes are then paid by owners of higher valued properties, including rental properties and vacation homes. Adopting, adoption of a residential exemption is of benefit in large cities or towns that have a substantial number of non-owner occupied properties, such as apartment buildings and vacation homes. Few than twenty communities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts have adopted this exemption. Some of them are constable, Boston, Brookline, Cambridge, Chelsea, Everett, Malden, Nantucket. Generally places that, um, yeah, have second homes or apartment buildings, non-oc- non-occupied. So as a result, all the improved parcel, uh, residential parcels in Topsfield are the principal residents, residences of the taxpayer. There is little or no benefit in adopting a residential exemption in Topsfield. A small commercial exemption, what is it? It is an exemption of up to ten percent of the property value for eligible commercial properties, shifting the tax burden to ineligible commercial properties. So eligible businesses cannot have more than ten employees as certified by the Department of Employment and Training. The build in value cannot exceed a million dollars and the exemption goes to the building owner, not to the business. Where we have a lot of known on, non-owner occupied commercial buildings. It would go to the owner, not to the, uh, to the actual business. This exemption is applicable in those communities that have a substantial commercial industrial, industrial base with a sufficient number of larger employers. So considerations for tonight, historically, the town of Topsfield has voted a minimal residential factor of one. They have voted not to adopt a residential exemption and they have voted not to adopt a small commercial exemption. That's the end of my presentation.
I just jumped.
So, can I make a motion? Vote to adopt a minimum residential factor of one?
I'll second that.
Alright, additional discussion? I'd just say thank you, Tula. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes.
Residential exemption.
Uh, I make a motion that we vote to not to adopt a residential exemption.
I'll second that.
Alright, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No exemptions, okay.
I make a motion to vote to not adopt a small commercial exemption.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, no exemptions. And for folks who think we're getting, do this too quickly, we have gone through it a couple of times before. Um, so we do actually know, and we can speak a little bit of Tula's language now, so.
I will welcome Tula back every year, but that is my sixth time now here.
Yes, it is. Is it getting boring for you?
No, 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 it's good to be reminded of it all, but to Raphael's point, uh, I, I think I knew I was gonna vote before the meeting began, so.
So next year you have to try and sneak in something radical in there, alright?
I know, well, unfortunately, it's all the same stuff, just the data changes.
Just to make sure we're paying attention. Yeah, well, the data update is useful in and of itself, so thank you very much, Tula.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tula.
Thank you.
You obviously put some work into the presentation.
Thanks so much.
Alright, and next up, uh, we have the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals Fee Schedule Update.
Uh, so Mr. Chairman, I'm representing Lynn Bermudez and the boards tonight. Um, Tuesday, they took up a consideration around modifying the, um, some of the fee structures. And seeing how the Z B A is appointed by the select board, um, it needed to come back to the board to ratify and approve formally their recommendation. Um, there was some good conversation Tuesday night at the meeting that the Z B A held discussing, going through the process that they undertook. Um, I previously met with a administrative, senior administrative assistant to the board as well, um, and with my, my team walked through what the process would look like for, excuse me, stormwater and the permitting fees associated with that as well. Um, and so, um, there's some information on board docs, rel- give some relativity around what we charge and what some other surrounding communities are charging. Um, I support this, I think it's, we're, we're well below what the market is currently for permitting fees. So get us not anywhere close to the most expensive, we're right there in the middle of what we see other communities like size doing when it comes to fees. But as costs increase for us, our time, administrative components, this will keep us, uh, give us an opportunity to catch up a little bit on some of those costs.
There's a lot of different fee rates in there for different pieces of work, but, um, is it possible to sort of characterize what sort of an annual average percentage increase is on these?
Do you have to say that one?
Is it possible to, to sort of estimate what an annual percentage increase is overall on these fees?
Uh, I think one is going from two hundred to three hundred, so what's that, thirty three percent increase? Um, fifty percent, fifty percent increase, um. I know the, uh, comprehensive permit, for example, um, if we had done a similar fee structure, uh, for elderly housing district, uh, fee schedule for the Emerson Homes would have been twenty four hundred dollars, we charged, we charged six hundred. Um, and so for larger commercial endeavors, um, it's, it's very, very low relative to what, um, other communities charge. I think what you're seeing is, I don't, couldn't tell you the last time these fees were updated, but it's sometime, well before I was here. Um, and I think that it's not something that's been taken up, but, um, as we look for ways to find re- revenue for the town to help offset that tax burden, we just talked about, every little dollar matters and idea here is that we're just looking to get caught up, not looking to set the market um, and allow us to, to find those additional revenue streams, um, every dollar counts. And if you're doing a project, at the end of the day, a hundred dollar increase on that fee uh, relative to the typical project cost is, is not substantial.
And this still leaves us in the middle somewhere.
Yes.
And how much did we take in in these fees last year? It can't be a big percentage of our revenue, right? It has to be very small.
Oh gosh, no, our, our, uh, real estate taxes, um, is the largest component. Ninety three percent, ninety six percent of our revenue comes from there. Um, the next largest, I believe, is, um, state aid and, and local receipts.
Cause if this total, ten or fifteen thousand, I think I'd be surprised.
Um, let me think, so typically for, um, appeal of a building inspector decision or finding a variance, site plan review, special permit, um, typically would see maybe a dozen to fifteen in a given year, I think is what I've been told from the administrative assistant. Uh, comprehensive permits are much more rare. We don't see those very often.
So an example of that would be something like Emerson.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And is it fair to say, uh, sorry if I missed this, but the planning board looked at their fees and determined what, and presented this and same with Z B A, they were the ones that came up with these dollar amounts.
Correct, Z B A and planning board met Tuesday in a joint meeting to discuss this fee structures cause they are in a lot of ways tied to each other.
Yes.
Um, and so they wanted to make sure there was a good level of communication amongst the administration, which we did have. Then it was brought after we discussed it to the boards. The boards then were very complimentary. I think the board actually, the recommendation we had, um, initially was, I think, two twenty five or two fifty and, uh, the boards felt strongly that they, they wanted to move that to three hundred to become more in line with other communities. Again, not setting the market, but being more in line with the market.
I move to increase the planning board fees as presented.
Say.
Any other discussion? It's two motions.
Okay.
All those in favor of increasing the planning board fees as presented?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Uh, no abstentions?
Move to increase the zoning board of appeals fees as presented.
Say.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstentions? Alright, great. Right along, then we will move over to an interesting one. Two eighty one, Rowley Bridge Road, unit number six. The option to purchase, which I know I had to call Kevin and say, what?
What are we doing?
What are we doing? And he explained it very well, so.
I'll try to do the same here. Um, so Mr. Chair, Board, um, certain properties in town, um, whether it has certain types of conservation restrictions on it or, or, uh, affordable housing units, uh, towns statutorily have rights of first refusal when one of those units go into the open market for sale. Um, reason for that is they want to, towns may, cities many times want to protect those assets that they have within the community, whether it be get a conservation restriction on a property. get a conservation restriction on a property or if it's affordable housing units. Um, Topsfield's doing really well when it comes to its affordability. Um, with the Emerson Homes, we estimate that will be above the ten percent threshold. Um, which is sort of that that number that the state looks at. Um, and and it's sort of the um target number for communities to reach, um, and so we're conscious of needing to make sure we maintain all types of housing, diversified housing in our community. The good news is of this is that we did talk with the state, and the state did confirm that this is a deeded affordable unit in perpetuity. Um, and that the town, although does have a right of first refusal to purchase it. Um, if we decide not to purchase it, it will still be an affordable unit uh through the private sale transaction that would take place, uh working with the state is um do that process. Um, so it's our recommendation, knowing that, that the town uh not consider purchasing the property. In this instance.
So are there occasions where the owner of an affordable unit sells it in the open market for you know, a market rate uh unit in and this is what the towns, towns are protecting themselves from, is that the idea?
That's my understanding of why that this is available to towns. Um, certain types of affordable units have different types of restrictions, some in perpetuity, some not. Uh, this is an example where.
Somebody's car alarm, sorry.
Mine.
Anybody parked over here?
Is there a white Subaru? It's uh right next to me.
No, that's good, gives me a breath, take a breath on it.
And make sure.
It sounded like a fire alarm.
It did. Alright.
Thanks, Doc. Those guys get credit for that, right? Um, and so, again, it's um, in this case, it's 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 something of a moot point, cause all those confirmations were made and it's um it's something I'll maintain as affordable either.
So, um, make a motion, vote to relinquish the town of Topsfield's right of first refusal on two eighty-one Riley Bridge Road. Unit six owned by Ms. Denise Pellets and request that the EO HLC assist with the resale of this property. The select board chair is authorized to sign any additional documents related to the purchase and sale of the residence. Other than buying it himself, of course. That's not part of the motion.
Second.
Alright, any other discussion? My only question is, who is Michelle Wood?
I believe she's the current owner.
Says owned by Ms. Denise Pelletts.
Is she like a trustee or? It's really irrelevant, so if we don't know, that's okay.
You have to give me a minute to.
And she's the one who sent us the letter.
Oh, she's from the state.
She's from the state?
Uh, actually.
She's acting on behalf of Ms. Pelletts.
Good.
Ah, okay, thank you. Alright, that was my only question. Any other discussion? Alright, all those in favor of voting to relinquish the right of first refusal? Say aye. Any opposed to voting to relinquish? Any abstentions? Okay. Next up. Landfill monitoring contract acceptance.
Uh, so Mr. Chairman, every year we have a obligation to have a monitoring uh contract with a third party. Um, who ensures that all of the requirements, department environmental protection are satisfied. Um, and this contract was reviewed by the Board of Health. Um, and approved by the Board of Health, I know it's coming from the select board for your vote. This is the same contract we've used the last, I believe, three years, this will be our fourth year with Mike. Um, if you remember, prior to that, we were with Weston and Sampson, um, former health director went out to bid on the pro- on this uh service. Um, and this was a significant savings to the town to go with Mike uh and his services as an independent contractor. Um, it's been working really well. Um, Mike's helped us with the Ponchi Colbert in the past and other ad hoc needs as they've come up. Uh, he's also helping us through some of the PFAS testing requirements um at the landfill that are now required by DEP as of last year. So that you'll notice it's an uptick in cost from years prior, but that's what that uptick covers is the additional testing plus market conditions.
So that was my, those were my two questions, when how does the price change and what? Um, how is it different? So it's different that we're getting new services, but it comes with a higher fee, how much higher is that fee?
Relative, you're you're on the contract?
Yeah.
Um, I think we're at thirty-nine thousand today.
Thirty-nine seven fifty.
And I think the contract prior was um somewhere around height twenty-eight, twenty-nine thousand. Um, last year, the contract lapsed.
Twenty-nine to thirty-nine.
This tw- yeah, that's the the market condition increase, cause last year there was, we went to like an um um, a a one-year non, we weren't under uh updated contract, cause we were trying to fine tune the upgrade up increases on the PFAS components on the contract. So it kind, it actually represents a couple of years of both marketing conditions, but the biggest driver is the additional testing for PFAS. Um, it's a separate test, it's almost in a lot of ways, um from all the water sampling that we do, it's it's doubling what they do, whether it's sending it to the labs, plus the extra work for the taking of it. Um, we did bid this out and we had another bid for the services, I believe it was closer to sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah, the PFAS they measure in such small minute amounts that it's gotta be expensive.
PFAS wasn't a problem when detectional limits were eighty parts per trillion. Any other questions? Assume everybody's read the entire contract, so all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Was there a motion?
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's why I was.
There is no motion on here, but I assume that the motion would be I move to accept the contract as presented. And for the chair to sign if that's required.
Uh, if I could, you seconded it too quickly.
I'm sorry.
Uh, I I think we've got, we've got one that came in the uh agenda.
Oh, is it on the printed agenda?
So, let's let's vote down that first one that was approved, or not approved, that was.
I could, can't I withdraw the uh motion?
I don't know, is that a thing?
I think I can withdraw the motion even before it's voted on, so I. I got it right here. Vote to approve a contract between the town of Topsfield and North Coastal Environmental Inc. of Rockport, Mass. For post-closure environmental monitoring and reporting of Topsfield sanitary landfill by Brook Park for a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. I would never have been able to make up that one.
I could still second it very.
Yes, alright, so any other discussion on the motion in front of us, which is the second one made there? Okay, all those in favor of the second motion made by member hook? Aye, any opposed? And no abstentions? And that brings us to.
Mr. Chair, I know that the um chair of the Alcohol Advisory Licensing um Committee is planning to be here tonight, but it
But we were too fast.
We're moving at a good speed tonight. Um, it's completely a discretion, I know, um, the applicants represented tonight as well. Um, we have an agenda after that, which is the annual town meeting warrant, which I don't think will be a long discussion, but we could if it's okay with you, spend five, ten minutes on that.
Absolutely, fine by me.
Allow the chair more time to be here.
Any other opinions?
We're skipping over.
For now.
We're gonna go out of order. Yeah, alright, so we are gonna go out of order while we wait for a member of the ALAC. Uh, and move to the annual town meeting warrant update and discussion.
So as we're entering at that time of year, warrant budget capital, um, my plan is to have regular updates throughout regular meetings and the work sessions. Um, and so by that, um there's two items, one, I'll give a couple of updates, then I'd like to hand it over to Mr. Metz to provide an update on the, um
Senior Tax Assist.
Assistance program, I wasn't sure, I was gonna say payment, but I don't know where we are with it. So, um, just so everyone knows, continue to work on the warrant, warrant's in a very good space comparatively on ahead of schedule from years in the past. Um, we do have a work session next week, um, on the tenth, and one of the agenda items is gonna be warrant articles. And that's gonna be a more in-depth review. We're doing it earlier this year to try to get a really good understanding of what's in there now. But it also asks the board if there's any particular articles um that you would like seeing this year that haven't been put in that first version that I shared with you at the last work session. Please bring that for next Monday. Um, it's completely okay if you don't, um, I know we've had a lot of conversations, some of the articles that we've have incorporated are articles that we've talked about in years past with members of the board, so we're trying to incorporate everything at this point that could be considered. And again, the hope is, generally speaking, with our board processes, as of the finance committee meeting last night, or last week, and we talked about this as well. Um, trying to get to a really good place with that over the next couple of months, um, where for the most part, we're confident on the articles. Now, that's always subject to change, we might have articles that are added if necessary later in our processes. Uh, that sometimes does happen based on things that pop up. And there's things that maybe later in the process, we might look at a second time and decide it's not something for this year that we wanna go forward. But again, the idea is that we have a really good product, um, that we work on over the next couple of months. That allows us to feel confident, we'll then solidify the warrant article numbers at that point.
Yeah.
Uh, end of the calendar year is my goal to have a a warrant with numbers, and then at that point, if it's items that we add in. Then unfortunately, we'll have to move things, I'm gonna try to, but the hope is to avoid that, so that's why we're going after it a little bit earlier this year. Um but I um I did share some of those updates with the finance committee last week, and they were very happy to know that what the schedule looks like and our efforts, what those look like as well. I don't know if anyone has any questions about heading into next week's work session?
One on my end, uh, I applaud us for actually following through and getting in front of the senior tax right off ahead of the game. There were two or three other articles that came up last year that also kinda came too late, that we didn't end up considering. Do we know of any of those kinds of things that we should be, other examples of this that we should jump on now? Either rule out and know it's dead or?
I think the hope is we'll do that next Monday.
Okay.
And that we'll look at all the articles as presented, I'll have another version I'll send out. That's not gonna look much different than the last version, but a little bit different than the last version.
Yep.
Moving some articles around, a couple have been taken out or changed slightly. Um, but most of them are a lot of just mechanical tr- you know, traditional items that need to go in front of town meeting.
Yeah.
Um, there's, um there's going to be the planning and zoning articles.
Yep.
Those are gonna be the ones that we get a little bit later, but I did have a conversation with the chair on those a couple of weeks ago and got a good handle on it, I think of what they're thinking about at least. But there are little ways out on their processes. Um, don't expect surprises for Masco. But we are gonna have some conversations with the administration, we scheduled a meeting, I think, later this week or early next week, to discuss, um the two town administrators and myself, um, with the leader, the superintendent, the uh finance director from Masco. We do it every year, it's a great opportunity to kinda talk openly about like, what are we thinking, where we're at, provide to them sort of where the towns are financially. To help give that information to them, so as they're going through their process and decision-making, they understand sort of what, where we are with with ours.
Uh, along those lines, Wednesday night, Masco has a budget meeting. Um, that fit, they've invited TAs, FinCom and Select Board to go to. I'm out of town, but Michelle, you're still able to go. So Michelle will be there, but everybody's welcome to go, if you wanna see how the sausage is made.
And support here, we know that for the last couple of years, they've been talking about fifty million plus or minus in capital needs for Mascanomic, that includes the initial uh OPM cost. As well as then the full cost of doing the work. Uh, usually OPM is around ten percent, eleven percent uh of that cost, and so they estimated five million last, two years ago, that article never actually made it through, if you remember. Um, and so if that's the number then, you can estimate it's probably, at that time was around fifty million, so we'll see what that comes in. I know they're talking about athletic fields, uh, it's either natural turf or or artificial. Um, that includes the uh building envelope, roof and the HVAC. Uh, the three main drivers of their need for capital, um, we don't know sitting here right now what their plans are for timelines around that, so we'll we'll be interesting to see sort of what they're thinking of doing this year. I do know though, they were accepted, and I got the email late last week, into the MSBA program. Uh, which is great, that means that they'll um, they'll be potentially funding from the state to help offset some of the cost uh of these capital projects, so, um, hopefully, and I believe if it's successful, could be in the millions of dollar range uh in offsets, so.
Oh, yeah. Could be in a thirty to sixty percent rate, right?
Yes. Depends how much money is available, depends how many projects they accept, and it depends um, other pieces of calculations that, as you know, go into determining what that looks like, but we're in the, we're. Yeah, so it's, um, it's it's certainly still a lot of work to do, but I, to that end, I don't expect like, we've had the one-off capital a couple of times with Ma- with Masco, with the turf fields three years ago with Masco, I don't believe that's something at this point to expect. Um, and so, you know, and then we've been working, the finance team's been working, the department has been work, ha- department heads have been working on other sort of miscellaneous or housekeeping items on the warrant, and then, um, obviously later this week, I'll talk about this, my TA updates, this is capital version one will we do? Um, and we have our certified free cash number to to then help us understand what's available. Um, to uh to cover the cost of some of those requests that we have this year, so, um all that kind of comes together and we'll keep putting that, um, we'll start putting together the articles for the capital items once the uh first version's out. We'll just keep moving forward, a lot, a lot more work to do, but it's good work.
To, just add for your comment about the couple of articles that came in late last year. The one in the housing trust, I did catch up with Teresa in September. Uh, that's probably gonna be tabled because of the funding. Um, they're getting through the state, so I don't think that's gonna be. Anything.
Well, so they're getting some state funding.
Well, that was the visitor.
Yeah, we've known about that for a while.
Secretary, uh, did a visit about a month and a half ago.
Yeah.
Um, Augustus, Secretary Augustus came and surprised everyone in the room, saying that they were gonna uh provide some funding to cover the cost of the siding project for, um, for, uh, Washington Meadows.
Little Rock.
Little Rock, sorry. I saw it coming, I saw this. But it's it's important, it's a need, and it's really, um
That's good.
It was very, very appreciative of the support.
It's really their development, right? It's really the the state owned and on development.
And their their funds come to s- from the state.
No.
Alright.
Uh, I could turn over to Mr. Metz if it's appropriate to give an update on the, um senior tax support program.
Okay, so, um, the attachment in board docs is really what we talked, we worked from last meeting. Um, where we left off was, uh, in terms of having a local circuit breaker program, that's kind of a clone of the state program in local format. Uh, we didn't want to have a cash payment method, we didn't wanna do a tax exemption if it was just gonna offset money people would get from the state through their circuit breaker income tax. So, um, we moved on to basically, uh, two things, researching. Um, raising some of the forty-one C limits and marketing or, uh, more, um with less, um, with less procedural issues at town meeting and so forth. Marketing the existing forty-one C mean programs more fully. Now, in the meantime, I was thinking about what's really the problem in this clone, these local clones of this state uh circuit breaker, uh, through through property tax exemptions. The problem really is the formula on the state Schedule CB, the state's income tax circuit breaker form. And if we could get this, talk the state into allowing approved programs that were clones of the state program with some modifications that are necessary to do it at the local level. Um, that if they would allow that, those approved programs have their exemptions added back to the paid property tax line in their form, that would basically solve the problem without increasing costs to the state. And without, um, necessarily increasing the number of people that apply at the state level. So, uh, I talked to, um, Bruce Starr kind of off the cuff. Uh, and he sounded interesting, but of course, that's face to face with a constituent. So I, I called his legislative aide, Theodore, uh, Thomas. And did a little presentation to him of the of the program and the issue. And he was gonna go talk to Bruce about it privately, so they could come to a conclusion without the pressure of a constituent in anybody's face. Um and apparently, they are interested and they wanna have a, try and arrange a call with somebody at the Department of Ed. I mean Department of, Department of Revenue, so um they're working on arranging that call now. And if something could be done through the regulatory channels without legislation, that would be wonderful. I don't, I think that's a little bit of a long shot, but I don't know that much about what's. Can be a regulatory change and what can be a legislative change at the state level, I'm not an expert in that, gonna let them tell me about it. So uh meanwhile, I've gotta gear up my research on uh. Property on the uh levels in the forty one C versus, you know, opposite spectrum of tax returns. Uh and see if I can match up that information and see if that leads us to any conclusions about. Taking action on forty one C versus attempting to market it and make more awareness of it. So um and at this point, you know, we're asking Bruce Tar. To represent something to the Department of Revenue, so I thought it would be. Um a good idea to make sure that we had a commit consensus, or at least a majority amongst ourselves. That thought this was a good idea. I don't know if we need a formal vote, but it certainly would be good to know um if Bruce has taken this position on our behalf that. That we're in favor of the state adjusting their formula to not penalize local programs. Through their, through an offset on their tax, on their program.
But this would, if they did do that, just for clarity, Mr. Metz, if they did, the state was able to make that change, the town. Select Board and then the town meeting would have to vote for the original program that we spoke about last year.
Right.
The issue, the core issue at hand that we, that was discussed, the ta- reason it was tabled, the reason it hasn't been, we talked about this year. Um would be resolved, but I know there hasn't been any formal vote to to move that forward at this point, so I think that's where you're coming from, Mr. Metz, is because. You know, if the state's advocating for it. And then they get it, the town would probably be in a position where they would be assumed.
We could propose something if we, if we wanted to and at, at that time, if we. Uh at that time, the select board would take a formal vote on whether to put it onto the warrant or not, and that's premature for that. But um I did wanna make sure before Bruce stuck his neck out a little bit, that we're. In favor of uh of this change at the state level, which kind of removes an obstacle in the local programs.
Right, I wouldn't wanna prejudge, so I don't think we wanna vote to say, yeah, definitely. But I get where you're coming from, you don't want the senator to go out there if there is a broad, uh what's the word, consensus, support. It's not formal, I guess, but yeah, of course, I shouldn't say of course, my perspective is with that. Out of the way, I would support.
I would support it too.
I would, I have a question though, do we have any idea how many people this would benefit?
Well, there was into the, the, the state does have numbers on the circuit breaker um. Qualification on tax returns by town, uh the last set of numbers that were, they had when I checked. Nine, ten months ago was two thousand twenty-two, at that time, there was a hundred and thirty-three people. Who qualified for the uh state senior circuit breaker income tax credit. Uh no, I'm sorry, a hundred and eighteen people, and a hundred and eighteen tax returns. Um and for a total of a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. So if we matched, you know, if we had a program and everybody. They qualified at the state level, signed up for it, and we said, well, match fifty percent or a hundred percent, you know, we could end up with. Fifty-five to a hundred and fifteen thousand of exemptions.
Imagine the state would want to answer that question at a state level.
Yeah, no, I'm not looking for a hard and fast number, I'm just trying to get an idea of the scope of the project, so. And if my recollection, cause we've talked a lot about this at this point, should. Everything, heaven and earth move and this all goes through and it were, let's just use a round number, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's now a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that is then shifted to all the other taxpayers. So effectively, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar override.
And it could be handled through the override accounts if it's an exemption. And what would happen is the hundred and fifteen thousand, for example, would be. Added in small proportional increments to everybody's tax return, including the seniors, but then the seniors that qualified. Get an exemption, obviously, that's much greater than the small increment that was added to their taxes.
And that's about seventy-five dollars, at high level.
And and the work that Bruce Tar and his office would be doing hypothetically, if this were to go through, it impacts everyone in Massachusetts.
Sure, yeah, those other three towns that are now running, that I know are running into this issue. Uh becoming more and more aware of it, it would help them, obviously. And if uh somehow we had to mobilize state, uh we had to mobilize interest at the state level. We could talk to them, see if they're interested, we could talk to the the MMA, see if they're interested, cause there's several towns involved. But we're not at that point.
It's certainly worth researching and getting that, getting more information from the state level.
And then procedurally for our warrant, then that means we're waiting for the state to do their thing first.
Yeah, I mean, let's say the state said, or our legislative local team said, this is a good idea, we're gonna promote legislation. The possibility that that would pass fast enough to get it on the May twenty-six ballot is pretty low. So good, in that case, it might be a May twenty-seven.
We'd be at the mercy, if they did move, we'd have to be at the mercy of the state, making the changes in quick order, eat away. We definitely won't make this year, if that's the case, but.
Yeah, the odds of making this year are very low.
Alright.
So how do you feel about?
We're going to go back, uh is everybody good, or do you wanna recess, quick recess or anything? Yeah, alright, we're just gonna take a four and a half minute recess. See, perfect timing, four and a half minutes. Alright, so the next item on the agenda is the public hearing for Alfalfa Farms' new liquor license. Uh the town of Topsfield Select Board Legal Notice, which was published in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter one thirty-eight, Section fifteen A. Notice is hereby given that the Topsfield Select Board as the licensing authority will hold a public hearing on Monday, October sixth, twenty twenty-five at seven P M. In the Select Boardroom, Topsfield Town Hall, eight West Common Street, Topsfield, Mass, zero one nine eight three, to act on a request for an on premises. All alcohol beverage license by the following applicant, Paul Donhauser of Essex County Cellaring LLC, D B A. Alfalfa Farm Sellers located at two sixty-seven Rowley Bridge Road in Topsfield, Massachusetts. Signed by myself, Raphael McDonald, Select Board Chair. And where do we go to first?
So Mr. Chairman, I can give you a very quick overview of what we have, we have um both the chair of the ALAC, our ALAC committee here, Stan. Uh we also have uh representation for the applicant as well, legal representation. Um I know the applicant is traveling today, wished to be here, but could not be. Um and so hopefully uh representation can can walk the board through any questions and maybe do an introduction of the project in a second. I will say what's in front of us today, right now, is a project uh at Alfalfa Farm. Uh iconic location here in our community, um the applicant is looking to do a. Uh brewery winery distillery, um similar up to what the current operations are, with but with some variations associated with it. Um what they're looking for is the same license, but likely different conditions, at least that's the request. That the prior ownership has had to be able to manufacture on site, which the state license have been granted for, for the new owner was. Previously granted to the old owner, similarly, they're looking for the the pouring license to be able to be able to serve. Like the last owner did onsite, the goods that they produce, and only the goods that they produce. And so we have seen um got con- confirmation that all the state licenses for the three types of manufacturing have been approved. Um by the state, and so with that, that allows them to manufacture, but also to distribute, to sell. Uh their goods for offsite consumption. And so with regards to the pouring license, we did confirm with KP Law. Our legal representation that it, what they're asking it for is appropriate uh for the board to consider. And that um if granted, it would be for the onsite consumption component. Um the sip, the the sipping license uh that that they're requesting.
This doesn't, wouldn't cover the retail sales.
No, that's covered with the state license, is my understanding. And so the um applicant did submit a full application for that, that was then referred to our ALAC. Typically, the processes that they'll review, meet with the applicant, work with the applicant to make sure everything is in order. And then uh once that takes place, make a recommendation to the select, uh to the select board. Um prior to them taking up and considering um the license and um. There was one element that um right for the end of this week, or past week, we're working on, which is the operational plan. Uh which is up on board docs now, I know the applicant pu- pulled that together. Prior to the meeting, but fortunately, it was pretty tight to the tonight's meeting, uh that was, as I understand, the only component that was not. And that's reflective in the ALAC letter received on Friday, that was the one component we were waiting for, I'm sure that the um. The applicant's representation can speak more to that uh if necessary as well. I did review the plan of operations uh with um with Stan uh earlier today, which Stan said it 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 did, I think. Every, he is fine with it, uh the chair said that he was fine with it at the time when we we reviewed it, so um. That said, um there's a lot of little components to it, there are certain hours of operation that they're looking to. Uh incorporate, which do vary from what the prior ownership had. Different, I wouldn't say it's more disruptive, less disruptive, but I, it it's it's different, we can go over that too. And I did compare it against um a lot of the event space as well as Austria, which is our our restaurant and bar location in town that exists. To kind of compare what they're doing as well, and it's it's not consistent in the sense that everyone has the same timelines. Uh it does vary for each applicant, but the request seems to be within the scope of what other applicants have received, whether it's event space or for the restaurant. Component, um and like I said, it's it's different than what they were doing, but. There were some very unique things put in the last license that uh ran till eleven P M um once a week uh at event. So it's it's a little different than what they're asking for, which is up to ten K. So that said, those are some of the highlights, those are some of the processes I wanted to share with the board. And with that, I will um ask the chair if you'd like to hear from the applicant, um and again, I know Mr. Realowski's here as well to answer any questions.
Yeah, um I don't know, Stan, the last letter we had said the the plan of operation was missing, I think we got it. Late this afternoon, um can you give any thoughts on that?
Well, I think that the plan of operation, basically, we wanna, uh you know, when we put the regulations together, it was almost twenty years ago now. Uh we wanted to uh basically make sure that there was a process that uh the. The, what was very clear, what the applicant was proposing or is proposing to do or not, or not, or not do. And so that the select board could determine whether you were gonna approve that, or whether you needed to condition it and put some uh some conditions on there. Now, the two conditions, the two things that always are difficult in a, in an application like this are. In in terms of, you know, what upsets the neighbors and the uh, you know, the neighbors, and those are, uh yeah, uh noise. Uh and traffic, you know, noise, traffic, uh uh parking and the. And the existing uh license, so the one that was granted for Alfalfa Farms. Had something, basically a, a general catchall on, you know, no excessive noise, you know, no excessive noise. And I I think that's makes sense, I think that makes sense, uh because you can't. There's a lot of factors here, I don't know how many, how many people live in close proximity, uh what the direction of the noise, uh of noise would be. You got nine, root ninety-five uh there that makes an awful lot of noise, and it's pretty much, it's pretty much uh incessant. But I think that as a board, you cannot, uh it doesn't make sense. To delegate completely, just give a li- a license without any conditions whatsoever, you know, wha- whatsoever. Because then you're giving away the, basically the club that uh. Uh any governmental agency uh ha- has, generally the. Uh you know, if you have a, get into a fight with a citizen, there's always. The uh the law is weighted in favor of the municipal, the municipality or the governmental entity. the uh the law is weighted in favor of the municipal, the municipality or the governmental entity. Uh, here, you just don't want to give that away, it's not that you're planning to do anything, uh planning to do anything with it. But if there's problems with noise or something like that, you have want to have something that you can point to to say, well, we have uh, you know, jurisdiction and authority to deal with that issue or to impose appropriate conditions on on that. That's why it is, I don't think that there's anything here in the applicant's um submissions that suggests that they're gonna do anything that's gonna be a real problem, the possible exception of uh, I think they mentioned uh amplified music. Uh, I think that probably requires some clarification from the uh, some clarification from the applicant. But um, it's nothing that we, you know, it's it's nothing that would uh, but if they turn it on basically a stereo stereo system, you know, at at what point does it, would it be uh considered offense uh offensive, who can hear it, all of all that? I mean, the you 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 deal with that, and we if you have to deal with it, that's all. Yeah, but we didn't see any reason not to approve the the application, the people are, you know, appear to be uh very well qualified, uh they seem to have capital, uh capital, the uh, the site is an iconic site and everyone knows uh the Alfalfa Farm, uh the Alfalfa Farms. Uh, and if you uh, uh, this would uh help solidify that from, you know, from the for the, you know, from the point of view of the the town and putting the town on the, keeping the town on the map, you know, on the map, that the fair are two, you know, two signature really, signatures for the town uh for the town. And so we we thought it was, there was no reason to think that this isn't a decent uh a decent application. The um, these farmer winery licenses are kind of strange. Uh, these winery, uh farmer winery, uh farmer brewery, uh and uh this is the third one, farmer distillery licenses, they're tying them all together. And the whole thing is that it it the the state backed into it, I think, in terms of putting all these statues together and then figuring out what would have happens if someone wants to do all three of them, or two of them or three of them. And given the, you know, the arcane nature of alcohol uh regulate, of alcohol regulation. So they came up and this state basically preempted it, allows them to give a to get a license, which they've gotten, they've gotten the three licenses from the from the state, now they need to get a license from the town to basically do the retail uh uh pouring of, you know.
And one thing I'll mention before, I certainly want to hand it over to the applicant too, um is that there's been questions at the ALAC meeting, for example, zoning and being able to do retail in that location. With the statement, the question, the threshold question for the pouring license, why it's historically been issued, is do they have the ability to manufacture? Doesn't necessarily look at our local zoning or state regs, but when they have what the state qualifies as the manufacturing and receive those licenses, this license looks and says, does it have that qualification it does, whether it's underlying zoning or that state manufacturing license, which they have. So they do check the right and proper box to be awarded this, which was something the ALAC did a very good job outlining at the meeting a few weeks back. Um, Rob Hardy did a great job to kind of reiterate a couple of points, a couple of questions of that. So that's just for our purposes, Select Board's purposes, is that's really a threshold question, which the or hurdle that they they have crossed. And then it comes to the conditions and the and such that um Sir Goulaski mentions and on what's appropriate in the request. Um, et cetera, so I I I don't know if you want to hear from the applicant themselves and give an overview of the project and what they're asking for tonight.
Sure.
Sure, I think I'll go quickly and address the
If you don't mind introducing yourself.
Oh, Caroline O'Connell, sorry, um, I mean, you're representing Alfalfa Farm Winery. Um, I think the first issue I'll deal with is the noise issue, just because we had already discussed, you just discussed it. Um, first of all, amplified noise is anything that uses a speaker, so anytime you go into a restaurant, it's amplified noise. So it doesn't mean like it's a huge speaker or a club, it just means that there's any type of speaker. So I think that's that's just a technical category for amplified noise. Um, but the second thing is that any outside noise on the patios will be directed towards Route ninety-five to mitigate any impact on any of the neighbors. Um, it won't go towards the road or towards any of the um, any of the butters. Um, and I think if you were considering a noise restriction, I would ask that there's a um objective standard on the noise restriction, not just unreasonable noise. And for example, Boston has, you know, certain decibel requirements. Um, so I think you would have to come with up with a a some sort of reasonable requirement as to what the noise factor is because unreasonable noise can mean anything to anyone, I think that becomes very difficult to manage for you, for the applicant and for um everyone dealing with this property. Um, I'm hoping that we never have to have this discussion again, but that's, I think that that would be my request if there's a if there's a noise issue. Um, so this, this is an application for a nineteen age pouring license, which is a pouring license for all three, the wine, the farmer winery, the farmer distillery and the farmer brewery. The A B C C decided to make a joint license for all three, because otherwise people were splitting their patios into three sections with stands on each of the sections. And you could only buy it at one stand and it just kind of was cumbersome.
And this is what they're doing though, in their construction, I mean, they have a beer section, a wine section.
I know, but you can walk on the patio and have beer, wine and spirits, you don't have to stay like, like there's like there's, it used to be, you would zone the the patio with like one third of the patio, you could have your beer, one third of your patio, you could have your distilled spirits, and one third of the patio, you can have the wine. So if you had a wine and you wanted to get a mixed drink, you'd have to leave the wine and then go to the next part of the property.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense, correct.
Correct, correct, so they've like, they've clarified that, so that now that the pouring permit um covers the entire, the entire property. Um, I think you've seen the the description of the premises, as we have the um, the farmer brewery section, there's a beer garden um in front of that section. And then between the two buildings, the um, the historical winery building has been rebuilt. Um, and I think one of the cool things that they've done is they've incorporated the silos into that building, so you can walk in and walk through the silos now in the kind of the distilling area. But I think they tried to keep very hard to keep a little bit of the historic nature of that property. Um, they and so I I think they're trying to make it a space for residents of the town and surrounding towns to use. Um, town of Topsfield, it doesn't have a ton of spaces for people to go. Um, so I thought this would be like a nice area, there's picnic tables, there's an outside patio, um, there's fireplaces, there's pool tables. I think it's kind of like a nice area for people to gather in town. Um, the hours are weekdays from four to ten, Saturday from twelve to ten and Sunday from twelve to eight. Um, there will be rotating food trucks, just so that there's food at the premises. Um. Now, they have a whole lot, I think that as far as what products they're pouring, it's only their own products and they're really intending to have this be an an insulated little commu- like area, so that they're pouring their products, they're selling their products on site, but they don't intend to, you know, make enough to distribute throughout the North Shore. If you want any Alfalfa or Essex County beer products, you go to the location and it's kind of that, that's it.
So they're not going to have contract manufacturers do additional volumes beyond their own capacity?
They might have, I mean, they they have some now because it's, you know, they need to gear up, and they might have some to support um, support the um the brewery as it gets rolling, but it's 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 if they have contract manufacturing, it's meant to support that one particular location, it's not meant to support that location and we're gonna sell it to, you know, a whole bunch of package stores, et cetera.
By definition, you can brews still be manufacturing, farmers manufacturing onsite and still manufacture some of your products offsite. And they do qualify, and I know that the applicant was very, you know, he had thorough process with the state to identify that, he needs to stay within those guardrails.
Right, as long as, as long as the product is made by you or for you and sold under your brand name, you're allowed to contact manufacturer.
I know the um, the manufacturing is not tonight's issue, but I have no objection if they can, if they can get enough uh marketing volume to sell to package stores or, you know.
They might, but right now, that's not really the intent.
And so you said that the plan was to only sell their own product?
Correct, that that's what, that's the restriction of the farmer series, is they can sell products that are made by them or made for them under their brand name. So they couldn't be, you know, you couldn't sell like, you know, Bud Light or, you know, Coors. It would have to be Essex County Brewing and their wines and their distilled spirits only.
Certainly not that downscale either.
You know, I'm not gonna, not gonna malign anyone.
And just to confirm what I believe are some of the facts, this is just for, I'll say, the two buildings out front.
In the patio.
And the patios.
And the patio, yes, yes.
Yeah, this is similar to what they were doing before.
Yes.
The building's under construction.
Yes, yep, and then um, this is just a general question, but to go back to that noise item.
Yep.
That's, that's been discussed in the Z B A meetings, why would we put it under the ALAC instead?
But that was about a different part of the property?
True statement, yes, you're right, okay.
And a different usage.
So we have not conditioned any application that's come in for a liquor license that's been awarded with any noise restrictions. Um, those are typically governed by state guidelines and more recently, within Topsfield, we have court cases from a judge saying ten above ambient is the standard. And so whether it's conditioned or not, that would be probably the condition, is keeping it within state and local regulations for noise, because that could change over time. Um, and then it would be on our board to help to police that in the event that noise is at the property line greater than ten above ambient.
If I may, I know we've talked a lot about noise and I don't think it belongs as a condition here at all. You're talking about a property with clear view of Interstate ninety-five, which I can tell you based on my research that I did just to make this point, it and I five on the west coast are the two most heavily traveled interstates in the entire world, maybe not China, but certainly in the United States of America. So every other one that you do, all the way from ninety at the top to ten at the bottom, five all the way to ninety-five, which is the order which interstates are numbered in work, uh, none are as heavily traveled as this one, and
I would submit that our section up here is not as heavily traveled as other sections of ninety-five.
Well, is it as heavily traveled as Bridgeport, Connecticut? No, but is it ever not have cars and trucks on it? The answer is also no, and I would submit to you that I have traveled that roadway literally every hour of day. So it is never not there. And the primary uh homeowners that we've heard from are fewer than a football field away, they are closer to ninety-five than Alfalfa Farms is. If you go stand on the Mascanomac football field, you would have to travel only ninety-six yards of the hundred yards of that football field to get from one of those homes to the shoulder of ninety-five. So for homeowners there to be worried about a facility that is a thousand feet away from their homes versus the two hundred and ninety feet away they are from Interstate ninety-five, and the map is right here, if anyone wants to do your measurements, is to me not sustainable. I I it just, and by the way, those same people directly abut a mobile home park, they are nearly, if not closer, to Route one, a Dunkin' Donuts, a gas station and a automobile dealership, all of which I would contend make more noise than this.
Do you want to live next to a gas station?
Well, and when I was on the finance committee years and years ago, I ended up with some zoning uh issues, zoning bylaws to to explain to the committee and support or or be against. And I found myself think realizing that, you know, it's hard for me to put myself in their place and understand their issue. Um, and I put a lot of weight on the butters uh concerns for that. Um, and but, you know, I think, uh, you know, I'm not gonna I'm not gonna say negative things about their property location.
It's not negative, it's just facts.
Well, yeah.
Its location is measurable by distance relative to this business.
But, you know, the the highways tends up being kind of a white noise and the uh, as opposed to then intermittent event music, which is more noticeable. But, you know, I I, you know, I chatted with Kevin about this and I think the the event space that eventually the zoning board will be ru- trying to resolve with them, I think in terms of noise, parking, traffic, whatever, you know, that's gonna be two to five times the magnitude of this. And uh, you know, becomes a much more important factor for that part of this business, which is not being decided upon tonight, than um than this, where, as you said, the music is typically indoors, especially in the winter.
Yep.
Uh, in the summer, it'll be point, those speakers can point in a less um noticeable uh direction. Um, so um, yeah, so I went down there today to see what all the hubbub was about. And took a look around and uh the the construction company owner onsite managing the project gave me a little walk, informal walk around very nicely. Uh, and, you know, and I was thinking about this in your context, Kevin, that we're really talking about, to simplify as great as possible, we're talking about two operational businesses here. One is this production and tasting and small tasting events, and the other is the large scale events of conceivably a hundred, hundred and fifty people, which is not before us tonight and may not be, mostly before the Z B A. So um, so thinking about it from that perspective, I'm trying to learn a little bit from Kevin. Um, I uh, yeah, and looking around the property, you know, I realized, you know, that the parking lots that were there have been torn up and eventually they're gonna have to figure out what kind of parking to have for this space, not even separate from those event space, which may come later. And they're and uh, they're gonna need some outdoor traffic lighting and some outdoor parking lot lighting, if they're gonna be a closing at ten o'clock or eight o'clock, ten o'clock, eleven o'clock. Um, you know, twenty, fifty, seventy people coming and going. So I do think it is important that uh, that we add to this licensing uh draft. The second one that was given to us, I guess it was actually version two or version three. Um, add to that uh a couple of sentences about uh that uh the parking and outdoor lighting permits for the premises uh as described in paragraph one and uh the occupancy limitations and the occupancy permit uh and fire codes for such premises, that those be included as conditions.
Can we?
And I actually wrote some language.
What does parking have to do with them? Does that even fall under our purview of this particular license? That sounds very much like it falls under zoning and has nothing to do with it.
I don't think about it as a person, I don't think
Putting parking and then alcohol.
The current Alfalfa has parking limitations tied to the uh permit that was put in place in twenty fourteen, which was actually something I was hoping to ask Stan about, if we know where that came from or why.
And does it any other? I don't think about this as regulating activities that happen once you cross the threshold of the patio or the building and enter inside that. Yeah, the uh, the people arriving and leaving and getting to and from their cars and it's it's not that this should require that that any particular issues there, it's that this should make sure that those have been resolved by the the appropriate bodies before serving begins.
So one of the things that I would ask that, and it's not in the draft motion, so I'm gonna say it aloud, we talked about this last, end of last week, is that we condition it on a certificate of occupancy, uh the construction that they're doing onsite under construction control. Um, that will require a certificate of occupancy at its completion, and so what I would say, we talk more about types of conditions that layer into the actual application itself, but I would say the motion should be conditioned on a certificate of occupancy. Um, and not to be able to serve until then. Um, that said, um, a lot of those, so parking's zoning, zoning enforcement, so as long as the number of seats that they have within the facility, there's a calculation associated with that with the number of parking spaces. Um, so that 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 could change over time, depending on the use of space. Um, but typically, there'll be a calculation that the uh Building Inspector and Zoning Enforcement Officer Ray will be responsible to make sure that the project, when they, he signs off on everything, has proper parking.
But can I ask, where is the parking going to be? Because we haven't seen any site that shows where the parking is going.
I believe, I got a drawing of it, but I believe it's on the side, um, on the backside of the brewery, it's a hundred spots.
On the north side of, it's facing Alfalfa on the right.
I was looking at it, walking around it today, it looked like if you're standing in the street looking at it, it would be to the right of the buildings and in front of the buildings.
Okay.
Between the buildings and the street.
I think that is their intention.
Yeah.
And I think you see that on the site.
Whoever issues permits that involve parking, I'm presuming they're also gonna look at the entrances and the exits, make sure those are sensible.
I'm sorry, could you just repeat that?
So I'm hoping that whoever rules on the So I'm hoping that whoever rules on the the parking aspect of it would also look to whatever body it is.
Zoning enforcement.
Would also look as the entrance and the exits from the parking to make sure that made sense.
Uh, I don't know if that is required, I do know that going through the planning. So we're talking about the masters, again, license is specific to the be able to pour within within the site.
Right, right, for the.
These are sort of auxiliary conversations that are important, but I'm not sure necessarily will at the top of the board.
I'm not saying we should determine what it is, I'm saying we should make sure the appropriate board has determined what it is.
Well, again, I'm not sure that I, you're you're probably right, Marshall, but there is precedent here. Well, the previous license was predicated on parking based on a twenty fourteen plan. I have no idea what that was.
Do we have any other license, anywhere in town that mentions parking?
This one.
There's a. Any other one?
I believe the commons was required many, many years ago to lease from the church um a spaces.
That seems wildly inappropriate.
I would say that I've had conversations with the owner and I've also identified that that. Um, requirement is allowing a single property owner to charge basically whatever they want to maintain that license and that's.
I think the, I think the church has retracted that here is.
I haven't heard any noise since that came up because we were looking at that at a point in time, but uh, yeah, I I think the parking is, and I mean, we do have. A representative for the applicant who I'm sure is familiar with liquor licensing and what conditions associated with parking are put on those. I know historically they have happened ten, fifteen, twenty years ago, maybe not twenty, ten or fifteen years ago. Um, I know we have not with the two that we've seen, both the fair and that um Pierce Farm member ever uh Evermore.
Evermore.
Those that not have parking uh conditions associated with them.
Here is where my resistance comes from, is I am loath to have this board just capriciously make things up. Decide that, well, for whatever reason, because a certain number of neighbors complained that we are going to treat this business than we would any other business. And that we would start putting things into black and white that don't fall under us. Just the same way I urge us every year to remember that the school committee is an independently elected board that does their own thing and. It's not ours to infringe on what they do as much as we may want to. While the zoning board is appointed by us, once appointed, they act effectively independently and it is not ours to tell them what to do. And this feels pretty strongly, all due respect to what the old former Alfalfa Farm license said, do not fall under us. I just, unless someone can tell me that this is something that should fall under us. I don't want to take a license and insert language into it when none of us, none of us. Around this table are in any way professionally inclined to know anything about what makes good parking or bad parking.
I don't know.
Or good design or bad design.
Let's be perfectly clear, I'm not saying what the parking arrangement should be. I'm saying that the appropriate approval body in this town should have ruled on what the park, that the parking is okay. Before the license is effective.
So that brings us back to the suggestion of just make the condition that they have received their certificate of occupancy.
If I could pipe up on that, that's a requirement to get a parking license, you have to have a certi- certificate of occupancy and insurance, so um.
And within that certificate of occupancy would be lighting, parking, everything around the bu- the building that they built.
Certificate of occupancy is usually the building, it's it's usually the building itself, because that's what the building inspector is looking at, not necessarily the site work. So, um. Not necessarily is probably the best way to answer that, doesn't mean they don't have conversations to make sure if there's ADA complian- compliance.
Mm-hmm.
See issues, then the fire chief who's already a compliance officer would weigh in. Um, I that is probably why you see some of the conditions that were put on back in two thousand fourteen or two thousand sixteen. This was uh December sixteen.
And and I don't think that um.
But they are broad, they are broad based, they're not specific.
I don't think the fact that the fair, the licenses we gave to the fair and the uh and Sean's successor's place, Evermore Farms. Um, you know, they've got well, the fair has bajillion parking spaces and well established. And Evermore Farms is, you know, their parking was well established under Sean and they they improved the driveway. But I don't think they felt the need to to add parking, so that was well established, so they, you know, the, this is an entirely new place. Where the parking areas have been, are in the process of, for the overall master project are being. In the process of being proposed to the planning board and site plans and the planning board and the zoning boards and my understanding is. They're not yet congruent, so um. I don't think it's uh, I don't think it's out of bounds to ask for whatever bodies rule on these things to rule on them before we start pouring.
And I'll I'll put my last two cents in this, the section three oh three nineteen, the select more bay employees such conditions as it determines to be appropriate. That is very vague, okay?
Excitingly.
You're saying it's not appropriate, you're saying there's another appropriate, I can get on board with either one of those, I'm just saying we do have the authority to do so. And to say that we don't, uh, I think would be different than my reading of our own bylaws. I think it's fine if someone else is looking at it like, uh, you know, we should, the occupancy permit, fine.
And I don't think it's gonna be.
I mean, I think one of the conditions on any license is it has appropriate zoning, so I don't think that that's an issue. I would say randomly deciding what the parking and the lighting is and imposing those conditions on a liquor license is um arbitrary and capricious and beyond what this board should be.
But again, I do not dare be so capricious to suggest that, I'm suggesting that whoever has the expertise has ruled.
Well, then how can, let me ask you this, you keep saying whoever, so we're gonna put a condition on and we don't even know who we're conditioning to do that? He's got a draft right in front of him and he said he has language, so I'm I'm perhaps jumping the gun, but he's told us what's in there, but if we don't.
So one of the conditions on the former Alfalfa Farm is the license shall comply with all federal, state and local laws, rules and regulations. That is.
That's in every one of our permits, isn't it?
Well, should be, um, and it they will.
I think that's in every license, I mean, it should be in every license, I mean.
But that kind of is a big catchall for I think what we're trying to get to, we're kind of carving within that specific elements like the parking or lighting or or. What have you.
As long as the parking and the lighting meet the Topsfield zoning requirements, that's kind of the the standard is, but that's for the zoning board to decide.
So is he, is he planning to bring forward the uh seating and lighting for this part of his project? To the planning board or the zoning board?
So, planning board is reviewing the entire site plan?
I'm asking the representative from the applicant.
She's she's representing the liquor license, so she might not have that answer.
Right.
Okay.
You you're welcome to answer if you'd like.
I I understand that's gone before, that's going before zoning, but I'm not, I'm not, have not been retained to handle the zoning.
So part of the review from ZBA and uh planning board includes a full site plan review and they are reviewing the parking lot, the lighting. Planning is requested, I'm sorry, ZBA has requested a lighting plan, uh, a noise uh study and a traffic study at their last ZBA meeting.
The entire premises, no, that was, they said that that was focused on the wedding venue.
That, well, so the parking lot that they're looking at will incorporate, that is, I think it is one of the same.
Correct.
My understanding, so.
That's, that's the kind of thing, excuse me, that should be the kind of thing that we need to know in the site plan, are they going to be. Having people at the wedding event and have the 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 tasting rooms open at the same time? Cause then does doesn't that change the amount of parking that you're supposed to have? Not that this is necessarily our purview, but that it is somebody's.
So Ray would have your, our zoning enforcement office be charged to making sure enough parking, so any property. If you have a mixed use commercial property, they're looking at the restaurant, they're looking at the retail sales downstairs and the number of apartments upstairs and they're giving a calculation of how many parking spaces you need. It happened just recently when the applicant on the end cap for the shop Topsfield Shopping Center who's putting a daycare in.
Oh, yeah.
They went through the planning board and they needed to come up with seventeen parking spaces.
So is the one hundred parking spaces for the entire premises or for both both premises?
So I know that when it was asked at the ZBA meeting, how many people will be at the uh given event, uh, he said up to a hundred and fifty, then they asked.
But that was focused just on the event space.
He said that there'd be a hundred, next question was how many parking spaces and he said a hundred and fifty. Now, there's a hundred and fifty dedicated to that um tent or if it's for the entire, he's count calling the entire parking lot a hundred and fifty. I did not, he was not asked to specify that, but I know that there's at least a hundred and fifty spaces. Also know that if there's an event up to a hundred and fifty, there's gonna be a couple of people carpooling, not everybody's gonna drive themselves, so I imagine there will be adequate parking at a hundred and fifty. I know we talked about the number one hundred earlier, I'm not sure if that, I don't believe that's in addition to, but.
I don't believe so, I don't think the plan is to have two hundred and fifty spots on that property.
That'd be a lot of asphalt.
That's a, that's a lot.
Yeah, so this, this is still a work in progress, you know, the the number of spaces for which piece of the project. Um, and uh.
But for the liquor license purpose is a calculation based on number of tables inside the facility of how many parking spots being de- dedicated. If he can't produce that after he finishes the product, the zoning enforcement officer will then basically say, you're not getting your, your, won't be able to get a liquor license, you won't be able to get. Um, you need to accommodate what's necessary.
And and that's our focus for tonight is is what's before us, the liquor license and those two buildings.
And the.
And what the building inspector has says is appropriate for that space at the time.
Has the building inspector said that though? Cause the plan of operation, and and I don't want to go down this rabbit hole, I really don't, but the plan of operation has a very specific number of parking spaces. And if that's to be shared with the wedding venue that is also using the same number of spaces, then you can see that there could be a conflict.
So again, it's, you have to imagine the tent and the area where they're gonna be doing the sipping. Is a multifamily building with two different uses, each of those need X amount of individual parking spaces and then. Whether it's through site plan review or through our enforcement agent, if there is inadequate enough, then they won't be able to operate.
Okay.
Yeah, so my my understanding from visiting today was the tent would be in the back right hand corner of the lawn behind. And they'd be parking up above on the right and behind and in front for for the uh. For this operation and the the event operation. So they're not necessarily joint buildings, but they don't think they have to be, I don't know if there's any reason why they have to be.
They're definitely not.
That's a separate permit, this permit is only for the the two buildings and the patio. The 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 wedding and other, the tent section is subject to a different license entirely.
And they're not pouring down there, so that's not before.
So I'll just, so play it out a little bit, so say there is uh X amount of spaces needed for the tent that, if he gets approval for that, assuming he does. And there's X amount of spaces needed for the Y, for what's that?
Y amount of spaces. You got two Xs.
Because he asked.
So if in the event that um the projects finish up and there'll need to be a count. Zone enforcement will do a count to make sure based on this use and this use, there's adequate based on the state regulations parking facility. They haven't built enough spaces, then we'll notify the applicant that they need to become compliant probably within thirty or sixty days. Um, and they'll have to probably go potentially go back because there's special permit if they get it to the ZBA to redo the parking plan. So it's incumbent on him to think about both because he's going through two different paths to understand that. And we are working with any applicant, like we have a lot of communication and we'll certainly sharing that as they're going through their processes, but. That's a very specific sort of nichey thing that could happen, but it's really on them because if they don't do it, it's just like noise, if they're above ten ambient at the property line. And someone complains and we go out there and we read it and it's eleven, we're writing them a letter saying you have to be compliant with the next amount of days or you're subject to fines, same thing with the parking.
So that's what I really want to avoid is uh, is a situation where after he's up and running. Um, or he's three quarters of the way constructed, then we make the observation that uh. What he's got is not adequate when you consider both places operating simultaneously or how they operate. You know, that's, this is the last thing I wanted to do was get in an argument about uh, you know, fixing, tearing stuff up or adding stuff. Uh, to your construction plan to take care of it, that's why I think it's a good idea to make it as obvious as possible. What are the key factors?
But but we're only discussing what parking spaces are needed for the brewery, the winery, distillery and the patio. There will be a certificate of authorization that will say, here's the maximum number of people that are permitted in this particular space and based on a formula. You will have X number of parking spots allocated to that space. And that's all we're discussing for this particular hearing, as far as the tent and everything else, there's a different calculation from the zoning board. That will say based on your tent and the number of people you have at this event, you will need X number of spaces for this particular function.
I fully agree with you, but the applicant did say at the ZBA meeting there would be a hundred and fifty spaces. If they're separate, we're fine, and I think what Bob is trying to say is we want to make sure these aren't being double counted and then.
I could, I could confirm with Paul, um.
Four weeks down the road, we found out there isn't enough spaces or that you would have to close down the tap room when there's a wedding event going on or.
Typically, typically the architect who's representing, especially under construction control, which is the process that they're taking. Instead of uh coming in for a comprehensive permit and having the inspector come in, they're basically taking us. Start to finish and then we basically, they certify by pains of perjury and a stamp, their engineering stamps and architecture stamps, if they've done everything they said they were gonna do. And in that process, although they are two separate things, I think just so the board's aware is that. Those architects and engineers are looking at the counts of parking spaces required.
Yep.
And that's part of what their site plan should incorporate and that would be, again, when they complete the project stamp. And our building inspector, if he sees and says, wait a second, you got a hundred over here and a hundred and fifty over here. That's great, or if he says you only have a hundred and fifty, but you really needed two hundred and fifty, that's where that conversation will happen. Sometimes it's unavoidable, but the good news is is that, cause I'm with you, Mr. Metz, like obviously we want to have a clean project, ribbon cutting, off and running. We have a good line of communication with the applicant, he's done project review team meeting, so we can certainly clarify as well and it sounds like.
Yeah.
His representation is doing that tonight as well.
Yeah, you know, I'm.
He's typing something to me from the airplane, so you know, I might have an answer shortly.
Cause I'm waiting, I'm reading this uh as you were talking.
It's a, it's a single lot.
I was reading this in deep.
Of one hundred and fifty total.
Yeah.
I was reading this in detail as you were talking and it does reference gap to follow all the um liquor control laws. Very, you know, stated in different ways.
Yes.
But I don't see a phrase that says they gotta follow all, all local rules and regulations. Including zoning in this.
In the draft.
I don't think that goes on, that that's not appropriate to go on a liquor license, liquor licenses, you can only cite for violations of the liquor license, you can't. Use a liquor license to bring a zoning violation.
Okay, so that that does support the idea that it's good to put in express conditions that they've attained the. The uh parking and lighting permits and occupancy permit.
Well, the language that you had over there was sufficient, wasn't it?
The one that was the broad stroke, both suspenders, they should be doing it anyway, but we're gonna consider putting it on the license is the licensee shall comply with all federal, state. And local laws, rules and regulations, and that covers.
Is that in this one, the last one?
I don't, I don't know if it is.
No, I don't see it.
I think what we took was the last license.
That's the original Alfalfa, yeah, that was the twenty twenty-four.
That's the original, we took, the one you see here was a draft just as a very starting, a basic, basic starting point.
Right, so it's, it's not in this one, but it's in the sort of the template that are, that rises out of the last one that the prior Alfalfa.
Two thousand, December two thousand sixteen version.
Okay.
But I just, I just don't see an ABCC investigator wanting to get involved in dealing with a zoning violation is beyond anything that they can do.
But we do put that in other permits, that this permit is contingent upon being in good standing and obeying all other laws.
I think that catchall is state, federal and local laws covers, covers it.
Right.
I don't have an issue with that.
Um, other questions? I had a few maybe for Stan, um, one of the things. That our bylaws say is that the application has to be complete for us to even bring it up. And two of the things that are called out there was the plan of operation. We didn't get that until late this afternoon, I don't know that I've had sufficient time to actually read through it, but the other was a simple thing like proof of citizenship. Was that part of the ABCC license? Cause it's not in the one that we have.
Yes, there, e- everybody's uh driver's license and passports were provided.
Passport, yeah.
For them to get the Massachusetts license, yep, okay.
They satisfied everything that's in the regulations.
Okay, um.
I think part of the problem is they sent those encrypted and they may not have gotten forwarded to everybody.
Okay, maybe, and that would make sense, I understand why you would do that, just the other previous ones we've seen, everything was here, checkmark, checkmark, checkmark. Um, my other question though was, this is unique for us at least to Alfalfa. Is that you're gonna be able to go buy a bottle of gin or vodka or wine or whatever. How, I didn't see it addressed, again, I didn't read the whole thing, so didn't get a chance to. Do we prevent somebody from just taking that over to the table and serving themselves?
There's a separate, there's a separate section in the premises that is the store. So there's a store with a register and somebody working in the store, so they, and it's, there's, you walk in and then you walk out. So there'd be somebody watching to see somebody coming back into the, the premises.
Okay, and is that in the plan of operations?
I don't know if it's in the plan of operations, but I can add it, but it's on the, it's on the drawing.
So the idea is we don't want somebody going into the store, buying a six pack and then taking it into the patio and opening it up, that's.
Yeah, no, you can't do that on a, you can't do that on a, a farmer.
Good.
Right.
Anything that's to go has to be to go, anything on premise has to be forward, you cannot, you cannot mix the two.
Good.
Right, that was my understanding too, so I was saying, is there some way?
The, the.
Other than the, the drawing.
Section is, is separate.
Yeah, I would love to have that, have had that in writing, cause it's not clear from the drawing, um.
How would, I mean, there's, uh, the gas station around the corner also sells alcohol.
Yep.
Theoretically, if this building is a separate building entirely, then how, uh, uh, you know. Why is that any different than someone buying something from?
Because the.
The gas station and walking in around the corner.
It's a great question, because the farmer's license is contingent upon them only, uh. Being able to drink what they produce on service on, on site or offsite, so if somebody buys it at the gas station. Even if they buy it and it's Alfalfa, even if they buy, they're not allowed to bring it there. There's no bring your own, that's, that's prohibited in here, but there's nothing that prohibits somebody from going to the retail section that I saw. Getting a bottle and.
Except that to her point, they're separate buildings.
They're not separate.
Separate, separate spaces.
Separate spaces, I would say that if that happened, that would be a license violation, so they would have to answer to that, because you can't, you can't.
No, it's.
I mean, I'd say it's the same thing, like, you can't go to the gas station, buy a six pack and walk into a, a restaurant and say, I'm gonna drink my own beer that I brought in, like, it's, this is the same apartment.
When I look at the shop, it doesn't look, looks like the only way you can get in and out is through the exterior, it's not like you can go here and.
Alright, correct.
Physically, it's quite easy to buy it in the shop and take it in, but it's just a matter of enforcing the rule.
It's like anything else, you know, you, there, there's people there that are meant to like, you know, you're in this, this, the shop, it's not, I mean, I think it's. Maybe two thirds of the size of this room, so if somebody's buying something and walking through the door, you would see it.
But for example, the previous license did have some limitations along those lines. The licensee shall provide adequate barriers around the patio so as to control access to authorized persons only. And provide physical separation from the tasting room and the patio from the production room, so things like that.
I think they have to put that in there, but since that time, the ABCC has, um, issued an advisory and a ruling on what is required for patios, and they do have to have. Segregation so that you prevent the public from coming in, so anything that has a patio just have to follow the ABCC regulations for patios.
And that's in the plan of operation, the patios will be enclosed to prevent access other than through designated entrances.
Okay.
So like the beer garden, you have to walk in through the, the brewery, the patio, there's a single entrance with a host to stand, so there's, there's. Controls on the egress, and then when you look at the, um, the garden, I mean, there's a giant drop, so unless you wanna like scale. A cliff to get up through the things, you're probably not gonna get in.
So the patio is one way in?
Correct.
But, okay, but, um, and then just as a reminder, anything for outdoors, according to our bylaws, we have to expressly permit. So drinking on the patio has to be expressly permitted and permitted.
Yeah, I think this does do that, yeah, cause with this period, I've talked about a beer garden.
Okay.
Just doing on beer garden.
Another question for Stan, I noticed our last one was a farmer's series pouring license. And I just don't remember from the other pouring licenses we have in town, I don't think those are farmer's series, this one would still be farmer's series.
Right, that was done, I think my recollection is that the, uh, Alfalfa Farm License. Uh, ALAC didn't, wasn't, uh, uh, involved, I think it was something that was kind of a novelty, and I think the select board at the time, just, you know, issued a. Issue a license, I was actually surprised to see the, how detailed it was in terms of the, uh, the conditions that they, that they had in, uh, they had in there.
When the farmer licenses originally were issued, you would get, um, a, a section twelve license of right. And then the ABCC changed the way those section twelve licenses were working to allow, to go through the local towns and have local town hearings, so there's a, a change. I'd say about ten, twelve years ago and how the pouring licenses for farmer's series licenses were administered.
And what, what's logistically the difference between the two, a farmer's pouring license and a non-farmer?
Well, I think that, uh, if you were just growing, um, uh, hops and you were producing your own beer, you were producing your own beer. Uh, you could sell, uh, you could sell that, right, and you can, uh, uh, it, for ta- not to be consumed on premises, they. Massachusetts, uh, liquor, uh, regulation makes a big distinction between on premises and off premises consumption. And if you were selling, uh, product, uh, to be sold for off premises combo, uh, consumption like that. Is something that's bottled, uh, that's bottled, um, you cannot, uh, you cannot serve it, you don't see a restaurant. Where you can just go in and buy a six pack of beer, and that's, and that's the way the, uh, the structure of the, uh, liquor regulation.
They wanted to get the small farmer, local businesses, try to bring in some of these smaller businesses. And allow them to have tasting rooms, to have people come in and learn about the products, sit down, taste the products, um, and that's very different from having a restaurant license. Which has, you know, food requirements, it has, you can bring in whatever, whatever product mix you would like. The farmer were really meant to sample their own products that they are creating, and that's why they get these kind of exceptions to what is normal in the liquor laws.
Okay, and then by making it a farmer's pouring license, we don't need anything about being produced by or for Alpha Farm, because that's. Embedded in.
Yes, it's been, embedded with the regulations, yeah.
Okay. Alright, um, I've monopolized the last fifteen minutes, other questions?
Deserve your chance.
My whole thing is I just have not had a chance to review the plan of operation, um, and Stan, I know you said it was good.
It, it satisfies the requirements, the regulations that, you know, you know, we, we, we weren't looking for something that was a, a thirty page document that covered every. Uh, you know, contingency, uh, it's basically, uh, you know, from thirty thousand feet, what are you planning to do, you know, what are you planning to do, how are you gonna do it, and I think that. What he's done is that, done that, we've all looked at his qualification, Mr. Don Hauser's, uh, uh, qualifications, he seems to be a very. Serious and substantial person, he's not doing this, I, I think to make mon- uh, to, uh, the financial, the po- possibility of financial gain. Maybe, uh, a, uh, maybe an element of what he's doing, but I don't think it's the primary element of what he's doing, he seems to have a real, uh, you know, uh. You know, love for wanting to see something like this be suc- uh, successful, and all these farmer, uh, licenses are really designed. Not for, for, for the purpose of alcohol regulation in mind, they're, uh, they're to promote, uh, agricultural, uh, uh. Agricultural businesses in the state of Massachusetts.
Okay.
It's a different, it's a little bit different.
This is more of a production, manufacturing business than an agriculture.
Yeah, I, I don't think any of them are gonna be successful, actually, but.
Yeah, but they're meant to use, you know, wines that are, you know, grapes that are brewing in Massachusetts or, you know, it's meant to be local.
Yeah, the third party hops, third party.
They're not, it's not like we're, you know, brewing in New Jersey and whatever.
We're in my basement, I got six gallons right now going.
Bring them up to Alfalfa.
I can't, no, I don't have a permit.
Just sell them to anyone without a permit.
Yeah, I know.
They, they still have the grapevines out back.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they grow in the grapes on the.
Yep.
Even the old Alfalfa, they had to buy a lot of the grapes, they have enough.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's mostly fruit wine, okay, one other question then, Stan, so are we gonna get another letter from ALAC saying that the application is complete? Because the only one that we have is the one saying.
We can do a letter that says the application is complete, I think that, uh, I thought we, the letter that we sent last week was basically said that, except.
Okay, I can see how you can interpret that one.
That was, that was the intention, we're only an advisory, you know, uh, committee, I think we see, uh, see our vote job is to, uh. Try to, uh.
Yeah.
Keep the guys out of trouble when it comes to al- the alcohol regu- uh, alcohol. Uh, because it is a, a tangled web, uh.
I know in past, in a couple of past licenses, you spent, so your team spent some time on the operational plan. Making sure that was, that made sense, so I know I'd appreciate a, another.
If you think there are some things that you'd like some more detail on, we can try to do that.
Just, well, not necessarily more detail, again, I haven't been able to read the whole plan of operation. I mean, for me, that's why I'm a little bit hesitant to vote one way or another tonight, cause we didn't get it till late, um.
It's a pretty quick read.
It's only seven hundred and twenty-eight words long, and that includes headings.
I think the one, the one I, we haven't really spent too much time on is the hours of operation, I mentioned at the opening, um, and I think that. It's, it's, it's interesting looking at what's been done in the past, and we've already talked about some of the things that have been incorporated, I think might be. Questionable, but, um, the hours of operation is always consistent, there's always hours associated when they can operate. Now, every application we've had, whether it's Astoria, which is a restaurant with a, with a bar, to events based like Willowdale or the Commons or. Pierce Farm, um, they've, there's no consistency of how those hours have looked, um, I could say like Willowdale, for example, it is. I think s- either six or seven days a week, um, from early in, uh, mid morning until eleven thirty at night. Um, ten AM until eleven thirty at night, every single day of the week.
And then twelve thirty on the.
I know from, um.
Yeah, or, I think the proposed hours are, are less than that.
It's, it's more than what, yes, and I think relatively speaking, like, um, it's.
Four to ten Saturday, twelve to, uh, I'm sorry, weekdays four to ten, Saturday twelve to ten, Sunday twelve to eight.
Yeah, so conceivably, uh, to be open, you'd have to have a person in the, in the distilled spirit. Area, you'd have to have a wine person and a, and a person in the brewery portion, then you have to have a hostess apparently, at least during the summer when the. When the patio is open, so you got four, five, six employees on duty and. And I wa- I, it's not my place to make this judgment, you know, it's a business judgment that the, the applicant is gonna make, but. I find it, uh, difficult to think that, you know, you could pay for those employees between four and ten on Wednesday. On a random Wednesday or Tuesday or whatever, but.
They don't have to be open, if they decide that those hours don't work, they just won't staff it and open the doors, but allows them to is what.
Well, these places in California, they, they got dragged around to the wineries, they were, their basic mission with these tastings was to sell. Cases of wine that you walk away with, and, you know, I kinda thought that's what this was. It worked with my daughter-in-law.
Yeah, I think, I mean, honestly, I think there's probably not a huge demand in Topsfield for people to be over there drinking at one o'clock on a Wednesday. Um, I think having all that staff in there.
There's a lot of bike riders in town, though.
You're gonna set them over.
Yeah, right. Just add bike racks, you'll be fine.
Yeah, yeah.
You don't need parking.
You don't need parking.
So that, you know.
I'll pass that along to Paul.
One interesting thing on the old Alfalfa was one to five Saturdays, Sundays, and you, they had the option to go, they didn't have a start time, but they just basically said you go up till eleven PM.
Fifty-two times a year.
So you're going to eleven P with. Audibles in the patio area, it says, cause that's part of the premise that was outlined in the pad, so they're looking for an hour less.
Yeah.
On those, so there might be more activity happening on a regular basis.
But that was only fifty-two times a year.
Once a weekend, I mean, you're looking at once a weekend where if you're probably looking at, um, you might have two nights a week where you're going.
Till ten.
Busy till ten, but you're going an hour earlier, it's sort of, it might be the trade-off, um, in a sense of.
I'm all for standardizing whatever.
Yeah, it's the, really, whether to use all these hours is up to the business owner.
It's gonna be market demand, market will determine if these hours make sense, but it, this is what I think the intention would be to be open.
I mean, I have no issue if you just wanna make it, you know, twelve to ten every day, I don't, you can only use it from four to ten, it's fine.
I'm sorry, twelve percent?
Expand, make it consistent like you did in Willowdale, which is like one start time to hold.
Well, I would even go one further and say if our standard stop time is eleven o'clock for other premises, then you can decide whether you stay open or not.
That's fine.
That way they don't have to come back to us in the year, if they say, oh, our business comes at nine fifty-nine.
I mean, my recommendation is, you know, if you're comfortable that the applicant is proposed, I'd probably stick with that, and then if they do come back, cause they feel they need to, then. Expansion of that.
And, and as loathe as I am to bring up noise again, if people are really worried about noise, well, you just chopped off an hour at the end, so.
That was sort of, yeah, what, what they were doing historically, um.
I'm not worried about noise, to be clear.
I wasn't sure where you were.
Yeah, I know, I've been very unclear on that.
I can't really hear from Parsonage.
There are some applications in here, just eyes wide open, historically, they've done indoor/outdoor space different times, but not always, so, again, that's the inconsistency.
Well, the outdoor spaces for the Commons, which is in a very residential area.
Very residential.
And that goes till seven thirty. So that is something else we wanna think about is if. Plus or minus if the, there's rationale for having the patio closed earlier than the indoor spaces.
I can say this, leaving this building usually at night, when it's dark, after rush hour, it's much different than. Me driving up earlier this evening, right before the meeting, I'm listening like you did, Mr. Metz, to the, to the traffic. It's very quiet, and it is very heavily residential with people much closer than what Mr. Hook said earlier. So I s- I, I just wanna give some relativity around the two differences, and that might be part of the condition of why you had the limitations out here.
Oh, it's clear why we have the limitations out here, I'm just saying, is that something the board wants to consider again or not, I think I know where Marshall is on it.
I'm measuring distances again to the, uh, busiest interstate in the country, so.
So, uh, just to summarize, it sounds like. People would be willing to go through with the motion with two. Conting- contingencies, I guess I would call it, conditions, uh, you know, contingent upon.
CEO is the, yeah.
Contingent upon revised ALAC letter supporting the business plan and adding that one sentence language that kind of. Are those the only two things that we're looking at?
The only other thing I mentioned is that, this is a unique space, so if you look at the Astoria permit, it has no, I don't believe it has a limitation on the number of people before police detail. Now, this space might be events that happen where they potentially lease up the space, but it is intended to be an open area for people to come in from the public. I presume most of the time, that, um, you know, when we've had, when we've done special permits and associated liquor relations with that. Whether it's event-based, like a wedding venue, um, we've always said ninety-nine or less, anything over that, you need a police detail on site. We have a restaurant that's going for a special permit, it attends school app coming up, this is similar in the sense that it's a. Um, it could have events inside, but it also is gonna be times where you might, if they're doing really well, you might have over a hundred people there just to come in and enjoy a drink. It's a little unique with that condition, I know we've talked about that condition, and something when we do the renewals in the coming month. Possibly doing something different with those in the future, that ninety-nine growing to two hundred, something to that effect, or maybe not, you, having anything in the future. But for the purposes of this license, I just want eyes wide open, if he's just operating his business and he gets a hundred and one per people coming through. He's gonna have to have a clicker and then call for a police detail, I don't know if that's the intent of what we wanted to do with that.
Not mine.
So, the only idea I would suggest that if, if it's an indoor for this license, either not to have it at all, or if it's an out, if it's an. Alcohol served for a specific event, or then there might be that same, that would give an apples to apples to. Willowdale or the Commons or Pierce Farm, and what was conditioned on those. But for general purpose, general admission, people just coming through, I certainly would recommend not putting that condition on.
But the, the detail thing, but in terms of the occupancy, uh, permit for each of those spaces, the, um. It's up to the, it's up to the people managing the space, if they, if they get more people wanting to enter, then they have. An occupancy permit for it, they, it's up to the management to make them wait out, outside in line.
Then there's a line.
Yeah.
For occupancy purposes.
So, uh, let me, uh, float this language.
Okay.
Contingent upon, this is not a motion, cause I'm starting at the end, I'm just floating language. Contingent upon an updated ALAC letter indicating receipt of acceptable plan of operation and the additional language as presented.
And a certificate of occupancy being issued.
Can, can I ask, uh, Stan, is that something that can be done, again, tonight was the first time I noticed they have a. Expected opening of November twentieth? Is that something?
Good, uh, we got a meeting next week.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to review the plan, um, for the specific purpose.
I mean, expected is expected, like, I have never met anyone who's opened really on time.
Yeah, from looking at it today, I'd be astounded if they could do that by November twentieth, what's left.
Where we are.
I'm not sure what the additional language is that you're referring to, Marshall.
Licensee shall provide, no, wrong one, licensee shall comply with the federal, state and local laws, rules and regulations. Licensee shall provide, no, wrong one, license shall comply with the federal, state and local laws, rules and regulations.
That was on the old permit.
And that will.
That's already in the existing regulations anyway.
Yeah, correct.
And that will encompass. Lighting, parking plans, uh, occupancy permit, et cetera.
Associated with those zoning bylaws, or the state, or state or federal standards.
I also think we need to make a change to the no serve within thirty minutes of the end of a, I think it says event. But to your point, the taproom isn't, or the tasting room is not an event, it would be to closing.
Eh, what is Austria?
I think the language is generally within X amount of minutes of closing.
Yeah, all the ones we've dealt with were very event-based, so they say event.
Yeah, I too.
And that's what's I think in our draft permit, which I think we should change to closing.
So it's hours of alcohol beverage sales, so basically, you can simply just, I think they're saying till ten was the ask for the. Is that hours of open, is that when the alcohol be served?
But that's hours of opening, and under ABCC law, if the hour is until ten, you cannot serve after ten, everybody's gotta start moving out, there's, there's ABCC. Regulations on when you have to stop.
Yeah, this, this draft says alcohol shall not be served within thirty minutes of the end of an event, but this is not an event, so.
I think it just changed that to the end to thirty minutes of closing.
So additional language and edits as presented.
I think you probably wanna tie that into what the ABCC language is, so it's consistent. On the, the final alcohol. I believe it's fifteen minutes from closing, but I can get it to you.
Our, our permits are thirty minutes before the end of the event.
Yeah, we've done thirty minutes on others.
We are trying so hard to make things.
Consistent, alright.
And then we said. We would take that, uh, so there are no events in the tasting room area that we're talking about, so the police detail portion would come out.
Well, it could be though, I don't wanna, I don't know if that's, I would imagine.
Somebody says, I wanna have my fortieth birthday party at your place and bring thirty people. You know, they could do that.
Well, then we need to say at an, at a planned event or something like that.
That, that's why.
You said before closing is fine.
Nope, two different things, we moved on. Now we're talking about the police detail again.
When alcohol is served at a scheduled event. A police detail shall be provided if it's greater than ninety-nine, that would exclude if it's just general admission or general, I don't know with the terminology. General op, like people just coming through the door, that way it's consistent with what we've done for. Facilities that have special permits for that purpose.
That's what I'm thinking, is we want the language in there that's saying the ninety-nine is fine, but if that's associated with the event, and it doesn't include the people that are there. Locked in the door.
If he's rented it, it's an event, people are contained, then you, if it's a hundred people or more, then you call in a police detail, if it's ninety-nine or less. They just happen, and in the future, in the next, later this month, I think, or next month, beginning will be taking up the renewals of the licenses.
Yeah, this is only like a six-week license.
It's only the ABCC to approve it, so.
Right, and we'll have associated a, um. We were very much planning that, Chief Hubby and I are planning to have a conversation around that ninety-nine number, and the history of it. Data behind it, and we're probably looking to request to modify that, so.
Let's take that all up at the same time.
Later, that's why like the inconsistency now helps.
So in terms of parking, lighting, et cetera, Ray is, will be, for this portion of the project, Ray is in charge of that.
So we never adopted dark sky bylaw, but we looked at a year ago, and so our bylaws. Usually, usually light gets, uh, discussed during site plan, if you don't come in for site plan now. Lights don't actually, like the fair added lights, they didn't have to come in for site plan on them.
I'm just worried about, you know, thirty, forty people coming out of the establishment, having a few drinks at the end of the night, and there's no parking lot lighting. You know, there should be some parking lot lighting.
But I don't know that that's ours to say.
Well, I know, but so we're covering it on, um, under the general rules and regulations of Topsfield, under that phrase. And I'm just wondering who does that, is that, that would be Ray, if I were. Ray would be ruling that.
Depends, if it's light pollution, Board of Health might get involved, if it's noise, Board of Health definitely gets involved, there's a lot of cross. With the disruption, but as for lights, I don't know in this particular instance.
CBA requested a light plan, which they had.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I know they are, yeah, no, I know practically, practically speaking, they're doing that. But for, it's kind of difficult, cause we're just talking about the license.
This will open before the tent opens.
Agree, yes.
There, there's a chance that this will open before the overall thing is, event thing is approved by the CBA.
And likely at this time, if he get, if they do get that license to do the tent. I don't think many people are looking to book it. Yeah, January, February, might be a tough time. Probably get a good deal, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to this, this is why I'm asking it, but is there Massachusetts law that says you have to have appropriate lighting for a business?
I don't believe so.
Cause I would think that that, your, your sentence.
It is, if there is, then we can cover it, if there's not, then there's, then the law doesn't.
There's nothing we can do.
It might be a real concern, but we actually can't. Can't add on above that, unless the applicants willing to do it.
If somebody wipes out in their parking lot, they're getting sued, and then it's whether or not they took reasonable precautions to make the premises safe. So, um, you know, for their own protection and for their own insurance policies, they're probably gonna do. Minimum standards of, of care.
Usually, uh, what we end up having to do on our end is the opposite, instead of saying you need to put more lights in, usually we get the calls where. That light's in my window, can you do something about it, and then it becomes a light pollution issue, that's why we were trying to push for the dark sky. So that we'd have some teeth to basically go back and say, hey, your light's pointing this, put the, put the buffer, point at this direction, stop, but.
Yeah, you put the, the cowls on it, and you point it at the space, but.
We might have that teeth right now, cause we never.
It's like one house right next to the property, um, right next to the parking lot.
Which is going, that is Jake, and he's going through the process right now with ZB A. And with the applicant on the tent, where the lighting's, that is being considered associated with that special permit.
I have them all, but I think we need to close the public hearing before we move to a motion, don't we?
Oh, you and your rules.
Says the guy with the code of the town of Topsfield on one side, and Robert's rules probably tucked in your backpack.
We use town meeting time.
Oh, okay. Uh, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Alright, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye. Aye, any opposed, okay, the public hearing is closed.
Alright, you all can tell me how I do at this. I move to.
Before you do that, cause I still would love, uh, maybe it's redundant, maybe it's not, maybe you all just shoot me down. But having that language in there about physical separation. Um, I think covers our butts. Sale of bottled or canned alcoholic beverages shall be restricted to the whatever room you tell us. Which shall have physical separation from the tasting room and patio.
It already does.
Yeah, I mean, I said that, that particular framework is licensed by TTV and the ABCC, so, you know, once that's permitted by those two. Licensing agencies, that you, that's not something that this board, that's jurisdiction over, it's just the pouring license.
So the state manufacturing license contemplated and approved, the plan as presented.
Correct. As the, as the TTV.
And their license would go away if, or if they needed to modify that, they'd have to get a modification.
Any modification needs to go back up to the ABCC.
And they would make the determination if it's appropriate or not.
Correct.
And anything that we do locally goes through the ABCC as well, so everything kinda ends in with the ABCC sometimes.
I think I just don't wanna have different parameters on this license than any other license, any other farmer license in the Commonwealth, it just makes it tricky.
Like I said, you guys can vote me down on that.
I'm gonna make this motion to approve the request from Paul Donhauser of Essex County Cellaring LLC. DBA Alfalfa Farm Sellers for a Farmer Pouring Series License for two, six, seven, Rally Bridge Road, Topsfield, Mass. Oh, one, nine, eight, three, for twenty twenty-five, and to be eligible for annual review and renewal contention upon. An updated ALAC letter indicating receipt of acceptable plan of operation. Certificate of Occupancy and additional language and edits as presented. Thank you.
That, that works.
Could, could I request that you actually read what the additional language as presented is, so, so like we know what exactly the language being added is.
Oh, it's not on the law one, that's the old one, you don't want those.
No, it's where the language is then. Sorry, I didn't see up.
Shall comply with all federal, state and local laws, rules and regulations. And.
Federal, state and local.
And I feel like people are okay with this, but, um, the other one was to add under when alcohol is served. At a scheduled event, a police detail shall be provided when there are greater than ninety-nine attendees.
At the scheduled event.
At the scheduled event, and then there was conversation about the alcohol shall not be served within thirty minutes of the end of an event. Which is consistent with our events, if we wanted to, in theory, keep that in.
We're gonna change that to closing.
Yeah, but we have an event saying clip, see, well, it's good we read this language, huh?
I should know second.
A closing is, uh, closing is pertains to events and.
You just have a town bylaw that says if you have any events over ninety-nine people, it just, you need to have a police detail.
We're trying to change that.
Uh, okay, cause I say, then you can just refer back to your existing law.
I know, so basically, it's something that was done a long time ago, um, and after fifteen plus years. We've only had a couple incidences, and there are actually events where we di- um, didn't have the police detail.
I would say, can we?
At the, what, sorry, where we did have the police detail, so the events that haven't had them actually have never had arrests, is my understanding.
Can we say that it's a private event, because otherwise, I don't want something like, hey, we're doing like, we're having a special collection of beers for Oktoberfest. Where it's open to the public.
Private event, I think is the proper intent of what we're trying to get at, so I can read it again. Okay, um, when alcohol served at a private event. Police detail shall be provided when there is, there are greater than ninety-nine attendees at the event. And then I.
Or sk- or invited to the event.
Well, after the event. Cause it's like thirty people show up, you really don't need a police detail.
But you gotta get one ahead of time, if you think a hundred are gonna be there, then you would schedule it.
It's always an estimate, same. So if you, if you, to save the occupancy, and I don't even know if this is the case, if it's a hundred and twenty-five is what they end up having for the facility. And they max it out for one event, a hundred and twenty-five, they, they should probably know ahead of time the number, and so if they think it's one twenty-five is what's. People, people that the, whoever's having the event says that's the number, then it's.
Yeah, that thing we did with the fair, I think it was, uh, it was estimated. Attendance or scheduled attendance or something.
Always is, we get a lot of ninety-nine events. So, um, and then the alcohol shall not be served within thirty minutes of the end of an event.
No, the end of closing.
I think closing covers the actual operations, and that's ABCC, but if they're having an event. To be consistent with the other closing times, which is thirty minutes, it would be for the event that we're doing the thirty.
Yes, for both, it's for both, it's for actual operations and for events.
I thought it was for both, what do we do for Austria?
They didn't have anything.
They don't have.
You're saying, cause the ABCC has rules on when you have to stop pouring.
You said that's fifteen minutes though, or you said closing, you can't pour after closing.
Ab- absolutely not.
I think we're trying to.
Usually it's prior to that, where there's a cutoff.
There's, there's, there's a restrict, there's, you know, when you have to stop pouring, there's closing, and then there's when people have to be out.
Yeah.
So what about for the actual operations, there's not the events, but general occup, it's according, like we did with the laws, we say according with the. Well, that kinda covers the blanket one, covers the federal, state and local laws, so we have that for the, um.
I don't know. What's the problem with just saying thirty minutes before closing?
Cause I don't know if that's consistent.
Covers events and operations.
You know, events don't close.
Well, they would, they better close by the time this, this closing hours are.
But you're saying that.
No, but events can end at nine, right, right.
And you want people to sober, the whole purpose that, so people have a chance to have a little time to sober before they get into the car, if they, they've been drunk.
But then that same logic would go for somebody going to a tasting room, you want them to sober up before they get in the car, it's the same logic.
But not consistent with what we did for Austria. And I think that's because there is ABCC when it comes to onsite consumption licenses that are provided, that's a standard. Stan, is that right?
I think the, I think a lot of the applicants actually want to have self-provision like that in there, so they can tell. Uh, if someone comes and you have all your relatives or your friends from the last thirty years, they haven't seen each other, they wanna hang around forever. Well, we gotta shut that, you know, we gotta shut, I'm sorry, I, I know you're having a great time, but we have to follow the law.
So we just say, well, if we stuck with the thirty minutes, alcohol shall not be served within thirty minutes of closing. Or in the case of an event, thirty minutes prior to the end of the event.
But it's, it's language as presented, so, we don't need to change the motion, we just now to, need to agree on what's presented.
So just to play that out, so if, it says the hours that alcohol may be served is.
So that would make our.
Ten PM, they could be, they'd have to stay, to be able to serve to that hour, they'd have to have hours till ten thirty. If the intent is to have it stop at nine thirty, you know what I'm saying, like, it's. I don't know.
These are the inconsistencies we have in our other licenses as well.
Closing call doesn't generally mean that you stop at twelve thirty. One AM closing call is one AM closing call.
Really? Last call at twelve fifty-nine?
Dude, is this the?
So these were not his opening hours, these were his serve hours.
Correct.
So the premise will be open weekdays. The license will pour the beer and wine spirits, we'll have it, it looks like, yeah, so it looks like.
Those are serving hours.
So when, where does it say the open hours?
Last, second last sentence under description of facility under the operational plan, the premise will be open weekdays.
So if they're only open till ten, then that's not.
So.
You're asking to be open till ten and pour till ten.
Well, I think what would happen is if these are the hours of operation, if we have, if it's fifteen, I don't know what the numbers, I don't know that. Level of expertise, but if it's fifteen minutes before closing, is what the ABCC standard is, and they're closing. The premise being open, doesn't say serving alcohol, but say it's open, the alcohol would be served till nine forty-five.
So then this is an inconsistency between the application or the, the.
Operating plan.
The operating plan and the permit in front of us. And I know you just said you wanted to have pouring till ten, but the plan of operations says the premises will be open till ten. So we can't have all three of those things be correct.
Uh, I can get a clarification on that, because you have a valid point, so we can make a contingency, we can make this contingent on you getting clarification on when. Final call is and when closing hours are.
Which will need to be in, maybe a ren- updated rendition of the operational plan for Stan, your purposes. So in order for you to weigh in on the, and meet on the operational plan, if we're talking about, the premise will be open. To me, that sounds like it's the hours of operation, which makes sense, like ten feels like a good time. Before they close the space down, if ABCC is fifteen minutes before closing. The permit that we have in front of us says ten A, ten P, it should be nine forty-five, will be the last serve. Yeah.
I think we would still try and stick with thirty minutes.
But if it's, but if that goes beyond what the ABCC.
Doesn't, then do all of our permits go beyond what the ABCC?
That was thirty minutes myself, in terms of what, uh.
I'm not familiar exactly, I'm going, I don't have, I couldn't say definitively with the.
I'm with Raphael on that.
So do we change the, I mean, we can make a contingent on something else, or we can.
Yeah, if, if you're gonna write the plan of operations to ten o'clock, open till ten, then the license would be nine thirty. The pouring.
The so, yeah, pouring would be.
Pouring license.
Well, they could consume the alcohol on, until ten.
You get your last alcohol nine thirty and be able to drink that. Or, but I, I don't know, are we a hundred percent certain it's thirty minutes?
We just know that's what's in our other licenses. We just know that's what's in our other licenses.
That's what I've seen, but those are for events, not for, the only other location where you have a similar type of use is with like a bar. Tap area like a serving, sipping, is Austria, which is silent on that, just says hours of.
As Austria's patronage is so low, right?
Hours of alcohol beverage sales is eleven A M to nine P M on theirs Tuesday to Saturday. So in theory, they stop serving if it's thirty minutes or fifteen minutes per ALAC, either eight thirty, eighty forty five respectively.
So then we either, right, in theory, that's already happening, or we make this application consistent with the event ones. And then Austria is inconsistent, which we can fix in two weeks, or we would have two different. Treatments.
I mean, respectfully asked, so we just follow what is existing, so for events, if it's thirty minutes, make it thirty minutes, if it's silent for the pouring, we'll leave it silent for the pouring.
Yeah, I'm not, I mean, if we feel like we're we're pushed legally into the A B C C limit of fifteen minutes.
If that's good, I don't know.
That if that's what we're if that's what we're pushed.
I'll have to I'll have to look it up, it might just be like, it might just be town policies, but I'll put it off.
If that's what we're pushed into, I think the license should be fifteen minutes before closing, closing is ten.
Austria closes at eight anyways.
Then pouring is to nine forty five or nine thirty, depending where we land.
That would be my preference, just for consistency.
Yeah. So the because of the way our wording, it's like it says hours when alcohol be served.
Be nine thirty.
We'd have to adjust that to represent whatever, if it's thirty or fifteen, I don't know. So maybe the ask is if you're gonna update the plan, hours of operation to the ten and then specify that. Whatever, I don't know, or we can look it up, I mean, we could probably plan, find out just as easily as fifteen or.
I mean, honestly, we might just no knowing why you might just move the hours of operation to ten thirty if you left that thirty minute. Right.
It should probably be fine, everyone else is eleven.
Yeah.
It's still earlier than eleven, so that's still fine.
I'd rather have it, I'd rather go to ten o'clock and have a fifteen minute limit than a than push it to ten thirty, but.
So we're at the impasse as to we don't know what the applicant wants. Uh, I you're 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 speaking on his behalf or do is this something you need to go back to him?
I I can ask him what he plans last call to be, um how long before closing that is.
Presuming.
With the license, with the license, licenses generally have hours of operation, and then if there's. A town by law that says, okay, this is when you have to make your last, this is when you have to pour your last drink, it would be gen- it could be in a town by law. Um, but there's but there's nothing here.
Stan. I don't think there's a bylaw, Stan, are you aware of a bylaw on how, what time alcohol has to be shut off by?
No, but there's a whole bunch of towns that have alcohol reg-.
Right.
Regulations in the last ten years or so, you can find, I can find a bunch of them and look, you know, look, do a little research and see what. What they generally do, I thought it was thirty mon- minutes, but uh was sort of the standard, but I could be wrong about that.
Okay, so we s- we got some issues to resolve and probably makes sense to. Reduce these to writing before we vote.
Mm-hmm. Well, the question is, we don't know what we're voting for as far as the hours, pouring hours.
Yeah.
Which is the only thing we're concerned.
I mean, the pouring hours are until ten, I guess the question is whether or not we need to move the hours of operation to go a little bit later to encompass that ten o'clock cutoff and pouring.
Or if he would be, if he was kind of thinking or is amenable to operating until ten and pouring till fifteen minutes before that.
No, she said the pouring hour is till ten, so I think that's pretty clear, right?
So then it's just the plan of operation that's incorrect.
Correct.
Okay, then we could stick with these hours, getting a an updated plan of operation.
Correct, with the the time that everybody has to be out.
Yeah, but I hate to just push it a half an hour more just to.
We're not pushing the actual plan a half an hour more, we're just pushing the language a half an hour more to reflect what the plan always was.
What's the plan say now?
Yep, pouring goes until ten o'clock, that was always the plan.
No, the plan says the premises will be open till ten o'clock.
I I understand, I'm saying not the written plan, I'm saying what their intention was, their intention was always ten o'clock.
Yeah, the.
So.
The plan incorrectly reflects that, so we're not adding anything to what their intention was, we're just changing the language.
Yeah.
Which to reflect that thirty minute gap, which again still puts it at a place earlier than anyone else is doing it anyway.
Do we really know their intention?
It was it was, yeah, ten o'clock was the the, you know, the the pouring hour, what we did not do is designate when we would stop pouring and when everybody had to be out.
She's representative.
So they're asking for three, three different times that generally do not go on a license application.
Cause they, cause the operation plan came from the applicant's team, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
So we're we're all.
Like anything, anyone writes, it looks really clear until somebody looks at it, and then you're like, oh, maybe that wasn't super clear, so I'm perfect, I'm happy to clarify.
Okay. Clear clarity is nice.
Yeah, so we just need.
The intent is to be transparent.
Contingent on a, who's who's still got, who's got the next one? Cause we have to have contingent on an updated plan of operation.
Well, won't that be covered in an updated ALAC letter indicating receipt of acceptable plan of operation?
But we're not knowing.
I think we need to see the updated plan of operation.
We're not voting tonight, right, so um.
We're not, I thought we were.
Yeah, why would we not?
That's, you 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 closed the hearing, so you have to kind of have to vote.
Yep.
We don't get like two weeks or thirty days to vote from the end of the closing?
No. No, the public hearing is closed. If you needed two weeks, then you'd have to continue the hearing, open it back up and continue it.
Wow, I mean, there's enough float of things floating around that I I probably wouldn't be voting for it tonight. I'd like to see, you know, an updated version of this with all the half dozen plus changes.
Okay, there there's not a half dozen changes.
That's kind of euphemistic.
Okay, well, there are two changes, yeah, so you're a numbers guy, aren't you?
There's two.
We got the hours, we got it, we got the events, we got the closing versus the end of event, we got the um police detail.
That's not.
We got the language on obeying Massachusetts and federal and local laws. So we're getting close to a half dozen.
But I don't, not all of them on the.
I think the alcohol licensing base, if the board is amenable to what was just said that it's. Alcohol is being served to ten, that is reflective correctly, we just need the updated plan, which is a contingency. So that doesn't actually have to change on license if the board, if that's what the board wants to do. The the time ha- uh that you have to stop serving for an event, private event, keep the language the same. You have to have the word private in there, cause thirty minutes is already baked into it. And then the last one would be to add that. When alcohol is served at a at a private event, please states. Oh, yada, yada, the rest of the rest of the language there. So it's actually the and then the, so it's your federal, state, local law line. It's adding the word private in front of the word event under alcohol shall, and it's adding. When alcohol is served at a private event, a police detail shall be provided for greater than ninety nine attendees at the event. I think that's, did everyone else have any, did you have anything else?
No. Um.
And then the contingency is the certificate of occupancy and an updated um operational plan reflecting. What we just talked about in the hours and.
And.
I mean.
And Stan and his group's approval.
There's no damage to him by cleaning this up and voting on it when it's cleaned up. Uh, you know, that's like less than two weeks, we've got an oper- an operational date of November twentieth, which is probably highly optimistic at this point, so.
It still needs to go to the A B C C, so we cut, that's a second process, but also the application was filed September fifteenth.
Yeah, our uh whatever we approve, whether it's tonight or our next meeting, which wouldn't be until.
Next Wednesday.
Next week, right?
Next Monday.
Next Monday.
We have a work session, but.
Then you have to take it to A B C C, that's what you're saying, and approximately how long is that process?
Mm-hmm. It depends on the commission's docket, it can take anywhere from three weeks to god knows.
Right, so we're not the whole.
No, we're not, but if.
Well, we've.
If we, if we can.
We we bumped this hearing out a couple different times now already.
If we can put the language together tight enough tonight.
I honestly think we're making this far more complicated than it needs to be. Because we're now getting caught up in these little lines of language, which it's fine, we want to get the language correct. But I think we all know exactly where we are in the big picture, which is this is gonna be approved. So. Again, I don't disagree with getting the the language correct, but we can do that inside a motion. We don't need to put it off for another week to more. If we all know the big picture is where we're gonna end up.
But she's gotta take us, she's gotta take a signed version to the A B C C, right? And we don't have a version assigned to that.
The signed version of what?
A license.
No, it goes to A B C C for approval, unless the A B C C approves, then they, then you issue the license.
So we're gonna basically send.
So you can, you can send this to the A B C C now?
The application goes up to A B C C.
Yesterday, you can send it yesterday?
No, once, once, once you approve, you do a form forty three saying it's been approved, and you send it to A B C C. A B C C reviews it, the commission reviews it, and then the commission says it's been approved, you can issue the license. But I would say the A B C C may have questions on putting last call restrictions on a license. It's it's unusual.
I don't think we, we didn't do that, we just said the thirty minute end of an event.
Yeah, I think it's end of end of an event, I don't, that's that's because that follows your event rules.
It's consistent with prior license that we approved.
Right.
I'm fine with the the what do you call them?
The contingencies?
Contingencies. I mean, yeah.
You wanna read them again, so you can?
Well, have we added one? Or is it still the updated ALAC letter indicating receipt of acceptable plan of operation? Additional language and edits is presented and a certificate of occupancy, those are what I, those are all still part of the existing motion.
The updated plan of operation. So yes, we've added one.
Which is ALAC will require of the applicant in order to give a written response that it's adequate.
That's why I'm saying, I think that first thing covers that.
Cause it says updated.
Yeah, updated ALAC letter indicating receipt of acceptable plan of operation, which will only be acceptable if it is updated to reflect what we're talking about.
Mm-hmm, okay, so the the comment back from Paul is ten o'clock is stop pouring.
Stop pouring.
So.
So that that goes back to pouring hours.
So that means the plan of operation that's coming back to you will now say ten thirty instead of ten, and for it to be acceptable, it needs to reflect that.
Correct. Correct.
Right, cause that's what we're asking for. So that comes back to you with that, then it's acceptable, then you can give us the letter indicating that you've received. An acceptable plan of operation, okay?
Right, so I'll just say pouring stops at ten, premises close at ten thirty.
Alright.
As long as that's the intention, yep.
I mean, it's, th- those are the license conditions, like we can't, we can't put something on there saying, well, as long as you, that's really what you think you're gonna do, I mean.
Well, what we're trying to do is get people to stop drinking thirty minutes before they're kicked out the door. Right, just like Austria, this might be problematic if you can drink up until.
But it's not like Austria.
Right around that time, and it it's similar, right?
No, Austria doesn't have any conditions.
Yeah, plus it's doesn't have anywhere near the patronage to have an impact from that.
It only takes one.
If, yeah, if we're being consistent, we have to be consistent, not sort of consistent.
Right, that that's all I'm saying is that we're not.
We're gonna review Austria in a few weeks anyway.
We're gonna review them all in a few weeks, so.
Something to look forward to.
And we're all going on the the edits, I've I've read them like four times, like, okay.
Yep.
So we need, we, okay. And someone read them all at once.
The conditions or the?
Both.
Alright, Mr. Hook, if you wanna read one more time the motion, I will then add to that.
So. Well, we've already made the motion, so I don't wanna read the printed part, cause we've already done that, so I will just review, cause I don't wanna confuse by making a motion again when we've already made the seconded one. The contingencies I added when I made the motion were contention upon an updated ALAC letter indicating receipt of acceptable plan of operation. A certificate of occupancy and additional language and edits as presented, which you can now tell us again.
Which are edits the existing language in the draft under alcohol should not be served within thirty minutes of the end of an A private event, adding the word private. Next line, when alcohol is served at a private event, a police detail shall be provided when there is greater than ninety nine attendees at the event. The last one is the third edit. Licensee shall comply with all federal, state and local laws, rules and regulations.
Can I ask one question? If a event ends at seven, does that mean they have to stop pouring at six thirty?
Yes.
Even though the license goes until ten?
I believe the intent is that people have a period of time between.
Okay, so they stop pouring for thirty minutes and then people can come back at seven?
To the public space, you mean?
Yeah. Okay, just get some clarification.
Yeah. In the thirty minutes?
Clear the event and then come back.
Right, right.
Can't prevent someone coming into the general space.
Yeah, they just walk out of the event into the public space.
Correct.
Thirty minutes before the end of the event.
Correct.
Right, they don't even have to wait thirty minutes is what he's saying.
Pretty much.
Um, my only question then is that the closing, what Kevin said was only for private events, the thirty minutes was only applying to private events.
Yeah, I'm presuming the fifteen minutes would apply, right? We kick in then, the statewide regulation of fifteen minutes.
So based on these hours, if it's fifteen thirty, five forty five, whatever the state regulations that A B C C has, should believe exist. Just don't know what that number is sitting here right at the moment, we go beyond that ten P on the service hours.
No, the the the.
Closing would go beyond that.
Service is until ten o'clock, that means you cannot serve anything after ten o'clock.
Right, and if, in the, right, exactly.
People can finish up their drinks, but there is no alcohol service after ten P M.
Correct, right, it's just when's the hours of operation closing and that's thirty minutes, fifty minutes.
Correct, so that might be like thirty minutes to give people time to finish up their drinks and get out and get their coats and whatever.
Right.
Alright, so, yep, that's fine. Okay, did did we have a second?
Yes.
I I did, yes, I did.
And then we had a whole lot more discussion.
Yes, there was a lot of discussion, we fully filled the discussion this time round.
Okay, any final questions? All those in favor?
I.
I, any opposed, any abstentions?
I'm gonna uh abstain.
Okay, three zero one, thank you, uh, next on our shortened agenda. Select board updates.
I have none.
Well, at the risk of stealing um Michelle's thunder, um Holly and Gillie has informed me that the Comcast. The Comcast uh is working in terms of watching the meetings, she's very happy, so congratulations for getting that up and going.
It's all Sam.
Sam, what's that?
All Sam, all Sam Moore.
Sam. And that's it.
Okay, Ms. Michelle Link?
I don't have anything.
I will hold mine for our next meeting, that leads us to the town administrator's report.
Uh, we are almost complete with the L E D lights, twenty or so remaining.
The one next to my house got changed, I didn't even really notice until I looked at it and said, that's a different color.
And saving the town money.
There you go.
And it looks better. Um, we did a part of a routine meeting with Caleb Group last week, which went well, we are looking as we schedule them, they were supposed to present tonight. Um, so that'll be coming as well, um. Met with Joe Geller about the rail trail, um garage, and this is what he brought to me, and I actually think it's a really nice looking.
Oh.
Option, now this is.
It looks like a little train station.
Yeah.
Exactly, and so they.
It looks like the old train station that was there.
And so we're looking at Park Street area to actually locate this.
I love it.
Um, might have to relocate a little bit of a sidewalk, a little bit of a little jog, but.
Park Street.
He's getting.
Not by the tennis courts then.
We're looking at either backside of Park Street or possibly the front side if it makes sense.
Front side, if it looks good.
It's aesthetically very pleasing, it's aesthetically pleasing, I think it it actually brings back and pays homage to the old train station that was there, um, it's expensive.
It looks like that, yeah. I was gonna say, that doesn't look cheap though.
So we're gonna find out what that's gonna cost us, but we are gonna apply, Joe committed that we're gonna miss. So we're gonna find out what that's gonna cost us, but we are gonna apply, Joe committed that we're gonna, Mr. Geller applied, that he's gonna apply. On behalf of the rail trail to the state for funding to allow us to cover the cost, but we will look to continue to have in our capital plan that you'll see next week. A line item to cover hopefully the cost of what it would be as a, as a backup plan. Um, if we don't need it, great, but hopefully have the allocation so we can do it, um. ZBA interviews, just a reminder, I think we all know, but that's happening next Monday, starting at six P, we have five applicants for full-time to re- uh, reserve positions.
That's next week, you said?
Next Monday.
Week from today, and, um.
At six, correct?
It's starting at six P.
Yeah, cause I have seven. Oh, no, I don't actually, I have six P M.
So six P M to seven is the interviews and seven is like.
Correct, we might go a shade into the work session if we need to with the interviews, cause we initially had four, when we, we set it fifteen, 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 fifteen. We have a fifth, it might go a little into that.
It's a good problem to have.
It's a good problem, yeah, good people, very good group, uh, did reach out to Chair Moriarty, who. Whose response back was that we have a really great pool of people to choose from, which is great.
Do we still have time to give questions? Or did I miss that?
So I provided the chair with set questions to work off of as a foundation, and I know who's gonna look at it, I know Mr. Chair, if there's any updates on the question.
I had said I was gonna send them out tonight. Uh, I guess if you have any late breaking news, that'd be appreciated, and I can just send them out tomorrow. Instead.
Sounds good.
I gave some questions.
Yep. You are one hundred percent of the people who wrote back.
I have admittedly been locked out of my Topsfield email for about a month now, so I never got the email that said. This, so I definitely will, uh, send something your way.
Alright.
Talk to IT.
We tried once, it didn't go well.
Debbie, Debbie can help, um, the budget capital. Um, working with the department that's, we're gonna, Department, I think on next Monday, and we're gonna have a, a pretty good conversation around what to expect budgetarily. Fincom set the guidelines to two and a quarter percent. Um, that's two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in, in real money for the town. Um, I can say between pensions and reti- and retirement, um, and the debt and some of our insurances. Um, not health insurances, we're at about a hundred and eighty right there, so it's a very, very tight year for us. Um, but we're gonna work really hard to try to figure out what we can do to try to avoid an override and to work through the processes.
So that includes, the two and a quarter includes exogenous things like health insurance, et cetera?
Health insurance is excluded, it's the only exclusion, there's pensions, fifty-five percent of it's town, forty-five percent is the schools. We cover the whole cost, so if it goes up a hundred and twenty like it did last year, that's about seventy thousand, or sixty thousand plus or minus that this, we're picking up on the schools in our growth. Last year, they gave us a bump of, of about two, two points higher, um, so it was two point four, two point five, we had relative to two point two.
So you're not talking about OPEC now, you're talking about current operational pen- pension reserves.
Yeah, so every year Essex County gives us retirement, gives us a number based on what all the towns' costs are and how they do in the markets. That's what we get, it's one of those, again, one of those types of like health insurance, here's your number. But we're working through all that and the team's well-prepared for it, we've been working really hard in years past. We'll work really hard again this year, lot of hard work ahead of us for sure. Capital's coming out, I think later this week it's due, uh, Department heads have been submitting that in, which is great. Halloween was very successful, spoke with Chief Hubby, no issues, um, everyone seemed to be happy, safe. Um, Parsonage once again was the place to be from what I heard, um.
Five hundred sixty was the count.
I feel like it was a little higher than that, but I'm choosing to term it almost six hundred.
Somebody on that street emoted thirty-five pounds of chocolate and twenty pounds of root vegetables.
Root vegetables. I heard somebody was giving away potatoes somewhere else in the Midwest, you gave away potatoes.
Not in the Midwest, yeah.
Well, I can report that the traffic, the Halloween traffic at Gray Hill was zero.
There's signs that say, don't come up here.
I can tell you someone else on that road had about a dozen inflatables and more power pulsing out of one outlet than was probably safe. Lot of extension.
Veterans Day activities are gonna be Tuesday next week, um, last year was ten AM, I haven't had a chance to confirm with our VSO, but assume ten AM start time. Um, on that Tuesday, right at the Veterans Green. Um, appreciate our veterans as always, and our, uh, Dick calling in for his help, our VSO and coordinating that effort, as well as our chiefs.
So this is the march around and a, a ceremony?
Just a ceremony for Veterans Day, no parade. That parade will be Memorial Day.
That's next Tuesday, right?
That's the eleven.
The eleven, eleven, yeah, November eleventh. And last, we're, we're having some conversations internally starting last week with, um, some of the federal funding around SNAP benefits drying up. Um, we have seventy-three households, two, over two hundred people on Topsfield that have SNAP benefits. Um, that will be affected, are affected, um, we reached out to a number of food banks to find out what the needs are. And if in fact there are needs, Beverly Bootstraps Accord, et cetera. Um, the towns, our department heads, we've talked about this, our sta- my staff's talked about this, we're gonna prepare to help coordinate a food drive. Ahead of Thanksgiving to try to ha- give the community an opportunity to, to get back, but also to help people in need, um.
Okay, so townspeople can donate food, donate money, et cetera?
We aren't soliciting money, um, checks to directly to bootstraps or other organizations, I'm sure would be more appropriate than coming through us. Cause we have to accept it at one of these, say, time's the essence, go right there if you wanna make a monetary. Uh, we'll likely set up if in fact we're, if the needs confirmed at the police station, fire station, town hall, library. And we'll do it for as long as we need to, but for at least through Thanksgiving to try to help people in our community beyond that might have some food insecurities. Um, everybody's in it, and we're in it too.
It's a great idea.
And with that, Mr. Chair, I fit, I, uh, those are my updates for this evening, thank you.
Alright, thank you, um. Gotta find my spot here, alright, yeah, we've got correspondence, including we have the. Updated Masco enrollment numbers, so that determines the split, if you remember the enrollment shift that came through. Um, that's in correspondence, and then we have a thank you to our Conservation Commission. Uh, normally it's the Fire Department, today it's Conservation Commission, so kudos to them. Um, that's what's in correspondence, um. With that.
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Does our share of Masco go up or go down?
Uh, I didn't do the math yet. It goes up, and don't forget it's a five-year average, but it's simple math.
We're, we're projecting that we're, we had a few good years four and five years ago, and this is the second one that's falling off. And it should be supplanted with numbers that are gonna be less favorable, so if anything, it should go up, not down.
So it's gonna be a worse horse or better?
Likely.
Worse horse, so we're looking at maybe.
We're not losing students as quickly as the other two towns are.
Possibly a three tier based on guidance, cause the other two towns are coming in at likely two fives, for guidance to Masco, we're coming in two and a quarter. So if we wanted to, we'll deal this later on, but definitely an enrollment shift, you know, cause we don't have a lot, we know that. And then just to get us up to their guidelines, if they're two and a half or two and a quarter, means another override to get there, and then if there's. If the school's coming beyond two and a half, let's say their growth overall is four percent, now we have another override, and the other two towns are overriding as well on that piece. So it could be three for Masco.
Alright, I think I heard a motion though.
There was no second, yeah.
There is a second, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions, I didn't hear Marshall.
I said aye.
Alright, we are adjourned.